Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 26th Board of Ed meeting for the Township of Hillsborough. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Dr. Sosan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my God, individual liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Lapira to discuss the resolution to amend the meeting procedures.
Sure, thank you. At the last meeting, you may recall that Ms. Salinger brought up new emergency regulations that the Department of Community Affairs Division of Local Government Services, or DLGS, issued in late September concerning remote public meetings. Dr. Sosan had advised that we would look into those, which we did. In fact, I had members of our office looking into them that evening during the board meeting once this issue was raised. As you can see from the revised meeting notice and the resolution that will be passed this evening, this Board of Education meeting takes into account those new regulations. It's out of the ordinary that the DLGS implement new regulations without providing lead time for public entities and boards of education to enact new procedures, purchase equipment, if necessary, et cetera. So with regards to that timing, we looked into this issue. I spoke to a representative from the DLGS, and as best I can tell, it seems that there was an inadvertent oversight that resulted in DLGS not communicating with boards of Ed or the DLGS email listserv about the new regulations when they came out. Apparently, none of our clients got the local finance notice or notice of the emails, nor did I as a subscriber to the DLGS email listserv. I did get a notice last week, and I saw that boards of education were not on that email distribution either. So I notified DLGS about that in my conversation with them. I don't know why or how that happened, but there it is. So in summary, we certainly wish we had known about those regulations back in late September, which we typically find out through the listserv or New Jersey School Boards Association, which did not send out an alert about these regulations until October 6th, the day after our last meeting. Had we known about the new regulations, we would have recommended that the board implement the procedures that you're going to now see in place tonight for that early October meeting. So there's a resolution that the regulations require us to pass, and that's what's being proposed this evening governing public comment.
Sorry, I was already looking at the resolution. Forgot I had muted everybody. This is going to be a lot of moving pieces tonight for me, so please be patient. All board members were provided with the resolution prior to the meeting for informational purposes. This resolution and the procedures that it outlines is for tonight only. We can make adjustments to it for future meetings, but the procedures were what was used to provide notice of the meeting, so we can't make extensive changes for tonight's meeting. So I'll just read the resolution so that the public is aware. Whereas NJAC 539-1.4H requires the Board to adopt by resolution standard procedures and requirements for public comment made during a remote public meeting, as well as for public comments submitted in writing ahead of a remote public meeting. And whereas the Board has considered the procedures and requirements it desires to establish for public comment and has chosen to adopt the procedures and requirements set forth below, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough hereby enacts the following procedures and standards of conduct for public comment at board meetings. One, time limit on public comments. The Board will utilize a time limit of three minutes per individual commenter and shall allocate 60 minutes for public comment at each meeting. The 60 minutes will be shared between those commenting in person remotely or written comments submitted before the board meeting. See number paragraph three of this resolution below. The Board will solicit in-person or remote comments first, followed by written comments. In-person or remote comments. Number two, in-person or remote comments. Individuals participating via Zoom webinar or in person may make public comment by signifying their intent to comment by raising their hand, either virtually using Zoom's raise-hand feature or in person. Participants shall be limited to a three-minute time limit and shall identify themselves before speaking. Individuals commenting in person may utilize their own device for a Chromebook or at the podium provided for that purpose. Three, written comments. The Board publishes its agenda late afternoon, early evening, on the Friday preceding a Monday board meeting. Individuals who wish to submit written comments must do so via email to boepubliccomment@https.us or by letter addressed to the Board Secretary, either of which must be received by no later than 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Kindly note that all written comments are subject to the three-minute time limit when read, which corresponds generally to 300 words. The Board may summarize duplicative comments as permitted by law. Standards of conduct. Participants wishing to make public comments shall abide by Bylaw 0167, the contents of which are incorporated by reference in this resolution. Additionally, the Board hereby adopts the following procedures. The Board shall facilitate a dialogue with the commenter to the extent permitted by the electronic communications technology, which shall include ascertaining the individual's name, address, and area of concern. Members of the public should understand the Board's virtual public forums, just like in-person public forums, are not structured as question-and-answer sessions but are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. Accordingly, the Board may or may not respond to inquiries made by the commenter depending upon whether or not the issue has been raised at the appropriate level beforehand, whether or not the Superintendent has had the opportunity to address the issue, whether or not the inquiry requires further investigation before a response, or as stated previously, if necessary to correct a misunderstanding or inaccuracy. Generally, when giving a response, the Superintendent or Board President shall do so at the close of public comment. Any dialogue that takes place during the individual's public comment shall count towards the speaker's three-minute time limit. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a remote public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the Board President or individual in charge of the remote meeting platform shall mute or continue muting the disruptive member of the public and warn that continued disruption may result in their being prevented from speaking during the remote public meeting or removed from the remote public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors such as, but not necessarily limited to, shouting, interruption, and use of profanity. A member of the public who continues to act in a disruptive manner after receiving an initial warning shall be muted while other members of the public are allowed to proceed with their questions or comments. If time permits, the disruptive individual shall be allowed to speak after all other members of the public have been given the opportunity to make comment. Should the person remain disruptive, the Board President or individual in charge of the remote meeting shall mute or keep muted the disruptive member for the remainder of the remote public meeting or remove him or her from the remote public meeting. That is the complete reading of the resolution. Can I take a motion to... Oh, we'll take a motion first and a second, and then take any discussion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. Now I'll take questions or any discussion. Mrs. Trheo?
I have several questions about the bylaw. The first is, in this resolution, although you stated that it would be for tonight only, it's not written in the resolution, nor does the agenda have a discussion period for this further discussion of the resolution. So that's point one. The second point, go ahead.
So what I stated was, we can make changes after tonight. If we wish not to make any changes, this resolution would be in place during any remote public meeting. So what I was saying is that for tonight's meeting, we should not make substantial changes to this, but we could for future meetings. If we chose not to, we don't have to.
So this is considered a hybrid meeting or a remote meeting?
This is a hybrid meeting.
Okay, so but the resolution says on line three that it's a remote public meeting?
Well, it is both. It is both remote and in person. Mr. Lapira?
Right, so it should be a hybrid public meeting.
Well, the regulations don't use the term hybrid, so they just say if you have a remote public meeting, if you're having a public meeting with public in attendance and you think that there may be more people who can attend who you can't fit into the meeting space, then you have to have it both in person and remote. So that's, we commonly refer to it as hybrid, but the language in the regulations just say remote public meeting. So we're doing both.
Okay, so my next comment is with respect to only one period for public comments? Is that that's in this one? I don't understand why we don't have two periods of public comments, so I'd like to see that added.
We can make that change for public, for future meetings, yes.
And what about for tonight?
That is, that was not what we intended for this evening.
I mean, I think one of the things that we should probably think, yeah, so the meeting notice didn't reflect that, but I think in all the meetings prior, you've been having one public comment period.
Right, and I guess I didn't really understand why. I mean, I guess because the people weren't here, so, but now that people are here tonight, there may be things that happened during the action agenda that the public would like to comment on, so I would like to see that. If it's not possible for tonight, I'd like to see that for the future.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, the next comment that I have is in item four, standards of conduct. So it's, so this is where we had talked previously about Bylaw 167 not actually being very consistent with Bylaw 164, and also the interpretate, or how shall I say, the way this resolution is written, it implies that public comment has always been 60 minutes, when in fact, Bylaw 167 says, item two, in the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 60 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by participants to three minutes duration. So that does not say that public comment is three minutes in duration. And so I think in the past, however many number of meetings, we've incorporated three minutes, but it's a misreading of the bylaw. So we should change Bylaw 167, or we should allow the public to speak if it doesn't go over 60 minutes. And then I object to the last sentence of 4A where it says, "Any dialogue that takes place during the individual's public comment shall count toward the speaker's three-minute limit." I think that was all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Stats?
I also support having a second time for public comment, but as far as the three-minute limit and the 60-minute limit, I do sort of support that because there's so many, there's what, four different ways that people can provide their public comment, and just managing all that, I think, and you know, these are very unusual times, so for the sake of fairness to everybody, and you know, can anticipate everything, for the sake of planning ahead of time, you know, four different ways that people can communicate for this type of this structure, I do support having that limit. Now, maybe in the future, when we do have a second public comment, maybe withdraw that That's just something to consider.
Just want to make a comment about that. I mean, one of the things that you, that when the committee was discussing it, what they were considering, among other things, you know, looking at Bylaw 167, how the district has been or how the Board's been conducting its board meetings in the past, so forth and so on. One issue that comes up is that you do now, when you have a remote public meeting or a combined in-person and remote public meeting, you are required to accept written comments that are submitted up to a certain point in time. We have a limit. I just want to keep in mind that the regulations themselves contemplate that you're going to have a time limit on those public comments. So I think tonight, we only have maybe one written comment, but I want you to think about, as the things that we were thinking about when discussing with the committee, is that you could have, if we have a three-minute limit for each public comment, you could get 40 comments, right? And that's going to take you two hours to read through everyone that we're required to read through. So I think that that's 40 written comments. That's not even getting to the people who come in public or who want to participate online. So I think just being mindful of the fact that there may be, especially with the ability to provide written comments, you may get to a point where if you're taking public comments in the beginning of the meeting, starting around 7:45, 8 o'clock, or whatever it is, you might get to 11 o'clock and you still haven't done any business. So I think that's just something that we have to be mindful of, but I take both of your points, and I think it's for the Board to decide. I don't decide them, the Board decides this, obviously, but in looking at the way other boards have handled it as well, I get a lot of other board meetings in addition to this one, and it's important to have some limit. And of course, I would also say, if there's a compelling public issue and we have a lot of people who want to comment, nothing precludes the Board from making a motion on that evening to say, normally we have a one-hour limit, it looks like there's a lot of people who want to comment this evening, I make a motion that we extend it for another half an hour. And you can always do that, but I, given that you might have a lot of public comments either through Zoom or in person or in writing, we need to have some limit, in my opinion, but that's for the Board, obviously, to decide.
Okay, so for this evening, we're just voting on the resolution that I read, and we can, we can make changes as necessary for future meetings. You'll also have to see that this is not an easy thing for the President. I have to take all of the attendees that want to speak, make them panelists, and then change them back to attendees and vice versa. So let's see how this goes before we make substantial changes. That is going to overtax the system. With that being said, we have a motion. Yes, Miss Stats, did you want to say something?
I'm sorry, but what, so we're just going to be voting on the resolution as it's written for what we're doing tonight?
Exactly.
If there, if there is a possibility of making changes for future meetings, will that mean we'll be going through a similar procedure maybe at the next meeting to?
No, we'll revisit this during the, at the end of the meeting. Let's see how this meeting goes and then make the changes that we want to make this meeting, because we have to notice the next meeting.
Right, right.
We don't want to go through this process at every meeting. So if we could, I've heard what everybody said, and there may be, you know, majority there who want to make some changes, I'm good with that, but let's just do this, make, go through the meeting, see how it goes, and then we want everything to be perfect. It may not be able to be perfect, given the circumstance that these are odd times. So we will revisit during the, at the end of the meeting, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud? Thank you.
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Correspondence is as written, and then we have one set of meeting minutes to approve. It's for the, our regular public meeting on October 5th. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud? But we just say all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Seeing none?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Superintendent's report is next. Dr. Antunes? Are you muted?
You're muted.
"You're muted" is the catchphrase of 2020, by the way.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Sosan. So I would like to, if you will allow me, to move up one motion, 11.9.1, which is to approve the appointment of a new science supervisor to take Dr. Felchey's place upon, as soon as possible, and that would be Lisa Keel, who is one of our middle school teachers now. I'd like to move that up if we can. I know her family is listening, and if the Board is open to it, I'd like to move that up to vote. Okay, so the Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve one human resources agenda item as follows, 11.9.1, and that is the appointment of Lisa Keel as the district science supervisor effective December 15th or sooner.
Yes, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
Stuck it.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Yes. Yes, and you're muted. I can't hear you.
Not now. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Congratulations, motion passes.
Thank you. I did, I did make Mrs. Keel a panelist, so I don't know if she wanted, usually she would be in the room and able to shake our hands, but Mrs. Keel, if you would like to say anything, you are unmuted.
Well, thank you. I'm very excited to start this position and look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We too look forward to working with Mrs. Keel, moving the district forward, so thank you.
Thanks. I know Dr. Felchey is very happy to have you on board.
Did you want to do the proclamation first, and then we'll do these?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so our next, our next item is to approve the proclamation, the red ribbon proclamation, so I will read that. Whereas New Jersey has the sixth highest rate of fatal youth drug overdoses in the country, and 15% of New Jersey teens admit to drinking alcohol for the first time before age 13. 39% of teens aged 12 to 17 in New Jersey admit to smoking marijuana at least once daily. The availability of relatively inexpensive and highly pure heroin in New Jersey has contributed to an increased number of drug-related deaths. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to reduce the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership and the District Life Skills Committee are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitments to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to the 31st, 2020. And whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to drug-free, healthy lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the educational community of Hillsborough further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education does hereby support October 26th to 30th, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its students and employees to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education encourages its students and employees to pledge, be happy, be brave, be drug-free. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as read?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Motion passed.
Thank you. Dr. Antunes?
Okay, so, good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to our first hybrid meeting of the year, and although we're limited to a capacity of 25 people, it really is a pleasure to look out and actually see people sitting in front of us. So it's a pleasure to welcome the public back. Kudos to Hillsborough High School Social Studies teacher Bob Fenster, who has earned recognition for his teaching as a 2020 finalist for the National Teacher Hall of Fame, a Lincoln Forum Scholar, and a Robert H. Jackson Fellow. Congratulations also to Hillsborough High School senior Ryan Pearson, who is nominated by Mr. Fenster for her excellent contributions and performance through the New Jersey Council for Social Studies. Ryan is the first-place recipient in the high school division for seven counties in central Jersey. Congratulations to Nathan Beanstalk, a seventh grader at Hillsborough Middle School, who cycled over 500 miles to raise money for childhood cancer in honor of his friend and hockey teammate. Nathan participated in the Great Cycle Challenge USA and rode 500 miles and raised $1,500 during the month of September for the Children's Cancer Research Fund. What a huge accomplishment to ride 500 miles and show such devotion and compassion to his friend. I would like to take a moment to remind the community of a new close, of the new close contact guidelines released by the CDC last week. Close contact is now defined as someone who is within six feet of an infected person for cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. This is a change from the previous definition of 10 or 15 consecutive minutes, depending upon the source, and I think is going to prove to be a challenge, more of a challenge than what we're already facing. I'd also like to take a moment to send huge shout-outs and thank yous to our school nurses and Hillsborough's local health officer, Siobhan Spano. Siobhan speaks with someone from our staff, including Mr. Mahmoud, Mr. Callahan, and building-based administrators, me, several times a day. We're often texting and emailing into the night, either collaborating on the best course of action or informing each other of evolving situations as they arrive. Finally, I'd like to remind families that if you plan on traveling over the next few weeks anywhere on the New Jersey Department of Health Advisory list, students must quarantine for 14 days upon return to New Jersey. A negative COVID-19 test will not eliminate the need for quarantine. If a student has to quarantine, he, she, or they may log in remotely to his, her, or their classroom. Please contact the school nurse if there are any questions. Thank you, Dr. Sosan.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. We now have committee reports. I'd like to start with Mrs. Haas on education. Mrs. Haas?
Okay. We had an education committee meeting, the best committee ever, on October 6th, and we covered a lot of material. We reviewed a new curriculum and revised curriculum. The revised curriculum was the Mandarin Chinese grades seven and eight, and the new curriculum is American Sign Language 4, CP. And both of those were unanimously approved by our committee. We did seven, well, six policies and, actually five policies and two regulations in regard to religion in the school, student assessment, attendance with the regulation, suspension with the regulation, and expulsion. And we had some very good discussions as far as all of those were concerned. Several of them were just simply updates. In the area of suspension and the regulation for suspension, several of us were concerned about what happens if a student misses detention and what is the follow-up. And in both the suspension and expulsion policies, the change is additional language that the principal must convene a meeting if a student is subject to a proposed expulsion. And apparently, this has been happening in this district already. We also had a lengthy discussion about Gifted and Talented Education Act, which is a new piece of legislation that was signed this past year to strengthen gifted and talented education into the law. There were some interesting... There were some interesting things that, uh, were added. Now the district must identify children K through twelve as gifted and talented. Uh, for us, that would be an additional K through two um, identification, which various members of our committee had different feelings about. Um, one of our members, Mrs. Maroon, said very succinctly, uh, it's interesting that there would be an expectation to identify kindergarten kids when we still have half-day kindergarten. Um, but one of the good things is that they are now requiring the identification to be based on multiple assessments so that a child who might be very good at science or a child that might be very good at creative writing or a child that might be very good at art can all be recognized for the individual area as well as their general giftedness. And I think that, you know, would be helpful, although my sense is that we've been doing that um, to some degree, um, all along. Anyway, our, our final and most aggravating part of our meeting, as always, was a calendar review for two thousand and twenty-one and, uh, the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year, and we're still working on it. Um, given that, um, it's a late start in the year, next year, because of the way various holidays fall. But we will be going back to the drawing boards and working on some other sample calendars at our next meeting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I should say that we haven't had word yet about whether or not snow days can be virtual in the future. We're hopeful that, uh, given that we're, um, doing a lot of virtual schooling these days, that that would be acceptable, but that has not come down from the state yet. Um, can I go to operations with Mr. Gillette? Thank you.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, so Operations Committee met on October eighth, so I'm gonna, uh, give you the highlights, but um, I, I have to note that that was, this was eighteen days ago. So I, I have to say that much of what I say might be already out of date. And I, I know I've talked about this before, about trying to rearrange how we do, um, meetings and committee meetings and our regular meetings, but, uh, so we, we can think about that in the future, but here we go. Uh, we had Dr. Haber at the meeting. He's our longtime demographer. He, uh, submitted a report that we asked for about, um, potential enrollment projections for the next several years, although the committee was appreciative of his efforts. I believe that, um, we're not entirely satisfied with the report, especially since it did not include, through no fault of his, uh, the, the official October fifteenth enrollment dates. So seeing as that, uh, uh, excuse me, the official October fifteenth enrollment. Uh, so, um, in consideration of that, we sent him back to, um, um, amend the report using those, uh, those enrollment figures and some other suggestions that we made. We had, uh, Brian Riley from, what's his name? It's Centric Benefit Advisors. Those are our, uh, insurance consultants. And, uh, he talked to us about, uh, new employees' health insurance plans, uh, namely the Educators Plan and the Garden State Plan. These will be coming up right now, really. There's, um, uh, choices to be made, uh, by employees soon, and then more choices in January and more choices next year. Um, he's still working with his professionals to, uh, determine what the impacts for the district will be, and he'll, uh, be advising us along the way. He may have done so already. I just don't know about it. Uh, we also had, um, Mr. Wasney from, uh, EI, that's our architectural firm. Uh, he had a few, um, updates and things to talk about with us. Um, we, we talked about the referendum projects. Uh, the track was just about done. They had an issue with the striping, but that's probably been resolved by now. It's been eighteen days, as I said. Um, he talked about eighteen days ago that roof work around the district was, um, substantially, uh, complete, except for, uh, and most buildings, uh, trim and other work, this is the, the major part of the roofing had been completed by that time. Um, we talked about the issue of some, oh, buildings still having leaks. Most of that is in work, uh, on roofs that were not part of the referendum. Um, and we, we talked about getting that done. We also talked about, um, paving at the high school and some mechanical work is already underway. The high school. We also talked about, uh, he had a proposal, um, for installing a method of ionization in our classrooms. This would be work in conjunction with the univentilators that are in almost all classrooms. Um, ionization, uh, works to, um, help with, uh, I don't know, cleaning the air, I might put it that way. Um, so let me tell you a little bit about this. Um, he's a big proponent of it, Mr. Wasney. Um, he suggested that, uh, fee for, for, uh, to design the system would be about forty-four thousand dollars. He suggested that, although we can't know for sure, because it's not bid out yet, that, um, a district of our size, it might be about five hundred thousand dollars to install the system, depending on, um, whether we install it in-house ourselves or if we contract the installation out. It can be a couple of different ways to do it. Um, uh, committee was initially, well, at the meeting anyway, very supportive of the measure and asked Mr. Wasney to begin his work. On that, I, we can talk about, uh, this after I'm done with my report. I'm not sure that the, um, what members feel the same now. I did discuss with a few boarders in, with a few board members over the past, um, two weeks, and I, I don't think there's as much support among the full board as maybe there was at the committee. Uh, but that's okay. Uh, the thing, uh, one of the things he said was that the, um, the design work and the ionization, uh, components and the installation could all be part of the referendum. He feels that there would be enough, um, money in the referendum to include this. But he, of course, can't be sure until it's bid out, until we're further along the process. Uh, this is something that would probably be able to be done by the end of January if we decide to go forward with it. And we can talk about that, uh, later. Well, just a couple more things. It was a four-and-a-half-hour meeting almost, so you have to forgive me. It was literally about four-and-a-half hours. Um, we talked about, um, something that was not in the referendum, which is the roof and parking lot at HES, Hillsborough Elementary School. Uh, the roof is once again in poor condition. Well, you know, fair to poor. I wouldn't say the whole roof is poor, but there are elements certainly that are poor. There are other elements that are fair, very few that are good. Um, also the parking lot, if you've been in the parking lot, you know that's um, lower than fair. That's probably poor. So he noted that, um, when, when this was estimate, when costs were estimated previously, before we had the referendum, it was estimated about one point six million dollars for the complete roof and six hundred thousand dollars for the parking lot. Um, we talked about this in committee. Uh, we, uh, we suggested that this is something that we could, that we would not, um, do without having a referendum. We would like to be able to get, um, some state aid for debt service for this. Um, this would be something that would cost maybe like one point three, one point four million dollars instead of two point two million. Uh, if we had the state aid, it would have to be, um, a referendum to get a one-year note and take the, um, our portion out of the capital reserve, which we have enough to cover it. Uh, but this is something that the Bond Council was going to look in uh, into for us to see if we could, what the feasibility of holding a referendum in March would be. Uh, so that this work would be able to be done next summer. Uh, if we did later than March, we wouldn't be able to bid it in time to get a good price for summer. You can't really do it earlier than March because there is no time. So this is basically what we're, what we're trying to do. So I'm, I'm sure at the next Operations Committee meeting, we'll have a report from the Bond Council at that time. And, uh, just one other, I'll report one other thing because it's just a thorn in my side. This, uh, HES playground, this is the never-ending project, uh, that, that won't end. Uh, where, where we, where we stand with it now, at least eighteen days ago, was that, um, they were looking to dig up some of the footings so that we can, uh, so that the, um, township can inspect to see if they were done properly to the right depth and whatever they, what standards they have to be. Um, and, uh, I don't know if that's been done yet. It's not been done yet, okay. So, I mean, that, that's still going on. So, um, I, I think that's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Um, Mr. Pulcifer, would you please do the HR committee report?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Sasan. Uh, the HR committee also met on October eighth. Uh, we began with a, a discussion of the current workload in the payroll office. Uh, there have been increases in monthly, quarterly, and yearly, uh, reporting requirements, which has put an, uh, additional burden on the office. Uh, to which we would add, uh, unfortunately, this year you have to add all the extra work that must be done for the various scenarios for people taking leaves or, or other actions related to, uh, the pandemic. Uh, we discussed the, the fact that there is, that is a significant increase in the load. Uh, but we also believe that, uh, this is something that is temporary and probably would only last through this year. Uh, so the committee recommended, uh, that Dr. Mahmoud research either a payroll service or a, uh, potentially a temporary payroll assistant to work in the office through this year. Uh, we then moved on to discussion of coaching appointments for the winter seasons. Um, we did have a discussion about, uh, two vacancies where we would be hiring new people coming in. Uh, so I believe the, uh, head girls and possibly assistant girls basketball coach would be on tonight's agenda. All the rest of the coaches, uh, will be on the agenda for November ninth, I believe it's our next meeting. Uh, we discussed, uh, policy and regulation, uh, eighty-three twenty, uh, personnel records. Uh, Dr. Antunes and Mr. Callahan, Callahan presented to the committee, uh, some of the changes, uh, in the standards regarding, uh, how we handle personnel files and compliance about what is public information and what is not. We've asked Mr. Callahan to review the, the standard operating procedure for personnel file handling, uh, and to report back to the committee. We also discussed, began a discussion of social networking policies, but with the other work we had, uh, for the committee, we had tabled that for the next meeting. We had a brief discussion about our co-curricular strength and conditioning program, uh, and where that fits and how it kind of goes across, uh, athletics and, and other activities and, and discussion where that fits, but, uh, took no action. And, uh, we wrapped up with a discussion that was carried over from the Operations Committee, uh, regarding the new, uh, New Jersey Educators Health Plan, uh, and how that would apply to us going forward for, uh, new hires, uh, into the district. And that was the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Dr. Harris, can I ask you to review the Communications Committee meeting report?
Certainly. The Communications Committee met on Thursday, October twenty-second. And, uh, to start off our meeting, Dr. Antunes requested to perhaps update the Board of Ed portion of the district website by adding a picture, um, and the length of term, and perhaps a picture of the whole board together, which would be something that is open for discussion. Um, Dr. Antunes also shared that we have now shifted in, um, how the district notifies the school community about the positive, uh, COVID test. And so the school messenger alerts will no longer be sent as a high alert to the, uh, with a phone call. Instead, an email will be sent to the staff from the building principal and an email-only school messenger will be sent by Dr. Antunes. Um, we also, in looking, we know that a lot of, um, emails come in asking us about why we can't be more open about who has COVID, but we're obligated to protect the confidentiality of those individuals. That's something the state requires. Um, we shared that there's a little bit of a confusion on who makes the decision if we were to shut down the school. And so to clarify that, it's a collaborative effort between the superintendent and administration and the Department of Health. That's nothing the board has control over. Dr. Antunes also noted, um, information about the referendum is, continues to be updated on the website. And the Communications Committee reviewed a draft of a chain of command for, uh, parents and a chain of command for staff, especially since this time of referendum work. Um, and considering that board members are not often invited into the schools, we need the eyes and ears of every staff member to be reporting things that they don't think are going right. That needs to be reported to, uh, through a chain of command, and we've always had a chain of command in our district. So to clarify that, Dr. Antunes will be sending out some information to the staff about how to report anything that they see that is not up to snuff in their room or their building. The, um, last thing that we just started to discuss, we'd actually been discussing it before the pandemic hit, was how would we celebrate the Hillsborough High School's fiftieth year? Um, and so as a result of our discussion, we are asking Dr. Felchey to contact the high school principal, Mrs. Spinger, about, um, any types of plans they might have for the fiftieth anniversary celebration. And that ended our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. We also had a Governance Committee meeting on October fourteenth, but we dealt with two issues. The first was the, um, remote meeting procedure changes that we needed to make that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting. And the second was bylaw oh-one-five-five, which is on, um, the operations agenda this evening. Um, so with that, I will, um, take any questions or anything, uh, for the committee chairs on their respective meeting minutes. Mrs. Trheal?
I have several questions for Mrs. Haas first with education. There was, I saw that there was discussion regarding the, the policy on religion. And I understand that there was, the Haas estimated policy is completely different from the policy we already have. And although the committee unanimously moved this policy forward, I was curious to to understand some of the, I guess, the intent behind religion and the policy of religion in schools specifically. I understand that we are a public entity. We are not promoting any specific religion. However, given that we just passed the proclamation, proclamation, yes, red ribbon proclamation, and regarding, what was it, something about, um, substance abuse, red ribbon week, drug-free, et cetera, that religion is actually one of the protective factors. Like having a, having a strong religion and such strong religious support in the community, I think is, is a protective factor. So I wanted to see, does this policy mean that we cannot? Like, how can we support students who have religion as like a support system? To be able to bring that into the school, not, not trying to convert anybody. But that is my concern. Does that make sense?
Um, it may or may not, but quite honestly, I don't think that's the role of the school. Um, I think it's wonderful that we have a very diverse community with a lot of religious diversity. And I don't think any one group should be identifying which religion should be supported. Um, all I know about the policy, and I have to apologize because it's Um, all I know about the policy, and I have to apologize because it's been a long time since I looked at them, since our meeting took place the day after our last board meeting. But the US Department of Education updated their guidance in relation to the um policy on religion in the schools. And those were the updates that were added to the or adjusted in the uh religion in the schools policy. Um, our administrators felt it was important to have this policy. There was some discussion about that at the at the uh committee level. But I'm I'm not going to get into the question. If any of the administrators would like to deal with that, they may feel free to do so.
So can I just clarify? I'm not I'm not proposing that we teach religion or promote any religion. What I'm asking is whether this policy allows us to work with religious leaders who provide supports for our student, because I know that that students use religion, religious their religious faith as one of the protective factors against drugs and alcohol.
So let me just say, Mrs. Trahia, that this is actually this policy, the changes are actually more permissive with regard to allowing time for religious activities in school during non-instructional time. Uh, children can children or or staff members um can can pray. They can have moments of silence. They can you know, they can um in terms of teaching, we can we can um teach, we should teach religious expression, it says, um utilizing religious literature where, you know. Uh, and in fact, I know that this is something that has been done for for many years. When my kids were in the middle school, they um they learned a lot about Islam, which I think is incredibly important in in understanding uh the the world today. So, I mean, I think this is actually more permissive than what was previous. It is not restricted, more restrictive. It's more permissive, if that helps at all.
Yeah.
But I guess the question is, how does that? Like, I guess, will there be? Is there a regulation in place? Like, for example, are there clubs that allow students to meet with their peers who of the similar faith?
I don't know. I don't I don't know that that's expressly forbidden, but go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't know that there are any specific clubs, but exactly what you just said, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't consider a club like we would consider any other club if somebody
Mrs. Stats.
Uh, I at least by past experiences, I think there is there has been a club. I don't know if it still exists. Um, but as of maybe one or two years ago, um, I think it was for Christians. Um, I think they met before school on Wednesdays. So obviously, that has taken place, and I don't think there's been any changes as far as not permitting that.
Right.
Um, so I I can't vouch for whether I still still exist, but obviously, uh, we have room for that.
Yeah, and in terms of
Can I follow up with that? Um, I hadn't thought about what Mr. Trahia had said before, you know, but now that I'm thinking about it, um, I was wondering if maybe we could add language. There's nothing that says we can't collaborate with uh religious leaders in the community. But maybe it might not be a bad idea to include that in some way, um especially for the purposes of helping um our students, our children with uh um substance abuse disorders or uh social emotional issues. There's, like I said, there's nothing that's precluding us from doing that already, but to have it explicitly stated could be a good idea, I believe.
There may be some verbiage and other policies regarding that. In fact, I know Dr. Schiff and I believe Dr. Antunes continued um to ha- uh meet with religious leaders.
Right.
A panel of um religious leaders in the community specifically to address issues, not just substance abuse, but other stress issues in the school.
Yeah, I think there I think some of them have have been at uh Borough Safe meetings.
Sure.
I believe.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I believe, uh, and again, I remember Dr. Schiff. And I don't know during COVID if you've had the opportunity to to keep that up, but he met with them quite regularly. He had a panel of of advisors and and uh things like that. So I uh but I think we'll look at the other policies before we we put something in here. This is first for first reading only, so we could always adjust later. And um, Dr. Antunes, if you wouldn't mind looking, uh having Kate look. Kate is the policy guru. Um, and then uh we can take that up as part of second reading if if that's still wished by the board. Um, did you have more questions?
Oh, I have a yes, I do. So I have an objection on the operations committee. Or well, let me backtrack. I have a question. I thought that the limit or the maximum amount that could be authorized without board approval was forty thousand dollars, but the EI ionization drawings was forty-four thousand dollars. So this is the first official time I'm hearing about ionization. So and and actually, so maybe the minutes are incorrect, but the minutes say nine hundred thousand dollars for implementation. Mr. Gillette reported out five hundred thousand dollars. That's a big difference.
I think we we all heard five hundred thousand, I believe. Um, they said
On the minutes?
Yeah.
The minutes say nine hundred thousand dollars. I will find you the page.
That was for a different district.
Oh, that was for
I guess it's a district of twelve buildings.
Okay, so six. Okay, so wait, hang on.
And that and that district all used outside contractors to to install all of them, and these are apparently very easy installations that are that our own buildings and grounds crew could potentially do about it. Takes about an hour per room is what our our architect had said.
So so I'm skeptical, of course, right? So the statement in the minutes says he stated that a district of similar size used a co-op to purchase. The cost was approximately nine hundred thousand dollars for twelve buildings. So that's like the upper bound, I'm guessing.
So our our the referendum work already includes about twenty-eight percent of the district. Was is that correct, correct, Mr. Mr. Mahmood? So um, this would be to address the remaining rooms. It would not be for every room in the district.
So are you saying the referendum includes ionization for twenty-eight percent?
Yes, that's part of the HVAC. Yep.
So prior to COVID, we thought of putting in ionization?
Yes. So as as it was described, um, and if I could, Mr. Gillette, if you want me to expand on what Mr. Um, uh, I I'm happy for you to do it as well, but from what Mr. Wozni said, are you okay with that if I just say so from what from my understanding? Um, ionization increases ventilation first and foremost, which is, of course, an important factor in in prevention of transmission of COVID. But what it also does is it charges particles in the air um and causes them to adhere better to filters and things like that. So um, there hasn't been a lot of work done specifically on COVID, especially um because you're not going to put um a bunch of people in a room without ionization and then next door with ionization to try to do a properly controlled experiment. But in the laboratory, it has been found that that um that there is a difference in terms of reduction of of COVID versus non-ionized air. That being said, there are some factors that are coming to light um that I think Mr. Gillette was uh sort of referring to, which is whether or not it increases ozone levels um and it really is effective against um against specifically reducing COVID nineteen.
So if we're spending or if we're proposing to spend forty-four thousand dollars, is that inside or outside the
Mr. Mahmood, can you?
So that, um, Mr. Heo, because this was um you're we're using a professional service that the board has authorized. The architect is the architect of record. Um, the board is authorized to ask him to do services that exceed the bidding threshold. So he would be authorized to do that. Uh, we wouldn't have to go out to bid uh because he is the professional service that's already approved. Uh, the work was talked about um in the referendum. Uh, so there is clearance from the board to move forward with this. Um, one thing that I I would like to put on record is that post, as Mr. Gillette said, post the ops meeting, there were some questions about ionization. And did we want to go back to either Mr. Wozni or any, um, you know, and ask more questions? And the decision was for the ops committee, post operations committee meeting, was to get a third party to weigh in on this and see if we can have somebody who doesn't have a vested interest in the financial aspect or gaining any money from the ionization. And we we did seek that third party's input. Uh, and I did get something from them earlier today. I just I'm going to share it with the full board. So there would be a recommendation of ionization as a whole. Um, and I think that'll be beneficial to the board to look at, discuss, and then make a determination if we want to move forward. So the ionization design that's going into the work is not, like, we didn't go out to bid yet for the formal referendum. So we have time to either pull it back, scale it down, or continue to talk about it.
So so I fully support improving air quality, but I don't understand why like, if we were going to spend half a million dollars on improving air quality, why wouldn't we just go out and buy HEPA air purifiers for every classroom? Like, I don't know how much they cost, but like, how many classrooms, how much they they like, why wouldn't we just do that? And then it would be in the middle of every classroom. Three sixty, it would make people feel a lot better.
I think it's I think it's a great question, and I think that um I think that the operations committee has some more work to do with people that wouldn't have any financial interest in this decision process. And I think we should ask some professionals for recommendations um so that the board can make an informative decision moving forward.
What's the status then? So is he is Mr. Wozni moving forward with the forty-four thousand dollars?
We we haven't signed anything. I haven't signed any formal proposal authorizing the forty-four thousand. Um, we were, there was some talk about it. Um, I think he left the operations meeting thinking it's okay. Um, I haven't been in contact with him yet. Um, but there was a an agreement at the operations committee to ask him to proceed. Um, I haven't signed any proposal yet, so I'm assuming, I don't know, Mr. Heo, that it's either completed or started. Uh, but after the board reconvenes or the operations committee reconvenes, after they read the recommendation of EDI, um, environmental consume, we may have to bring the operations committee together to say, you know, do we want to put a hold on this? Or do we want to talk about it as a board at the next meeting and make a decision? Uh, I think there's some unanswered questions with moving forward um so far.
But to be clear, the whole board would have to vote on moving forward or not in terms after even after we would get the uh any anything back from our architect. That would be something that the whole board would have to agree to.
But I think it's a waste of like, that's my problem. I think it's a waste of money to 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 move forward with forty-four thousand dollars if we're not planning to do it. Oh, I don't know. Go ahead.
I don't know if he's already acted or not. I mean, you know, it was unanimous at the at the operations committee meeting. Mr. Gillette.
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Well. Not muted. Speaking. Good. All right. So I, uh, the operations committee, I think one of the factors
Barely.
Yeah, I can barely hear you, just in your regular voice.
I'm gonna mute myself, but I'm mute yourself. I don't know. I can I'm very loud. I I don't, I can just speak. Yeah, I know. You got me now? All right. Plug it and unplug it and plug it again. That's the way to do it, boys and girls. All right. So one of the factors in the um in in the organization discussion was um uh, I forgot what it was. No, it was uh time, time. We're we're thinking about um how we can impact um air quality in the classrooms beginning in January, conceivably, when um when the heat is going to be on. The ionization only works when univentilators are working, so they'll be working in January with the heat going. And if we couldn't get this going now, uh, if we couldn't start to design now, we would not be able to have it bid and installed in by sometime in January to have it working. Uh, about a week or so after the meeting, I did speak offline with a couple of board members who were skeptical, and I started to feel that maybe this would not have board support. I did uh communicate with Mr. Mahmood and suggested that uh maybe he, you know, it's up to, obviously, he deals with the professionals, but maybe to have Mr. Wozni suspend uh what he was doing until we had this meeting tonight. Of course, that throws in the whole plan of getting a, you know, uh eighteen-day head start on uh on the project. That's why we uh we're going to go ahead with it, even though it was a little bit over forty thousand dollars, because we were sure that there would be board support. But then, of course, when I spoke with other members uh after the meeting, um, I started to think, well, these members don't, if these board members don't want it, maybe there isn't going to be board support. So it's really up to tonight. If 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 six or five or six board members tonight absolutely do not want this, Mr. Mahmood will call Mr. Wozni tomorrow and stop uh any spending on this. So I mean, you can really decide tonight.
Yeah, I would recommend, Mr. Gillette, um, that we get the opinion of that independent party, and that's our environmental consultant. I'd like to share that document with the full board, and then the board can make a decision. Um, I don't mind hearing from, you know, six board members. I can reach out uh moving, you know, if we not going to move forward, but I would ask that the board give the environmental consultants the opportunity to weigh in um and just kind of give their opinion. They have no financial interest in this um in this investment, and they would answer us, I believe. We ask them their recommendation moving forward.
Mrs. Stats.
Um, when we met in operations, um, I myself was uh really eager to get this going because, you know, I'm concerned about the air quality in 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 the schools, especially in the classrooms. Um, so uh, I I confess, I I maybe did not do my due diligence, but uh last week when I was at one of the works, New Jersey School Board's workshop sessions, um, they brought up ionization and uh mentioned the concern about ozone as an indoor pollutant. So that compelled me to do some research. And as I researched ionization, um, I couldn't find any scientific uh papers or articles about it. In fact, I looked at Ashray and the CDC. They said that there's no there's nothing that they could say either way, pro or con, because so much of this stuff is new. Um, so they couldn't say, like I said, they couldn't say anything either way. So that made me uh concerned about spending this much money on something, but I'm but um and now I'm starting to think about Mr. Heo's suggestion because, again, it depends on the availability of who knows how many air purifiers, but especially when we're talking about the cost uh weighed against five hundred thousand dollars or more. Um, it might it might be something to look into because that is proven. Okay, the CDC and uh scientists have uh 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 supported it as far as uh something that can work against COVID. But and and as far as the ionization, it's not a wouldn't be total waste. I wouldn't say we do both, but at least not a total waste because it obviously has been proven to be successful against other you know, air quality issues. Um, but as far as immediately addressing what is a proven, what can be, what is a proven way to address the COVID, um, I'd like to consider air purifiers.
Mrs. Haas.
You're muted.
Okay, last week I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Conference, and there were two courses that basically spoke of the And there were two courses that basically spoke of the bipolar ionization program. One of them was actually given by Mike Wasney with the contractor that he works with. And basically, they admitted that ionization was not tested for COVID-19. And they have tested in airplanes and they have tested in laboratories. But the proof of the effectiveness in school buildings really is not comparable to those venues. They talked, as Jane said, about the ozone issues and various other benefits. But, you know, what they were basically, what they didn't say was, when you have this kind of, you know, they were selling it as a self-cleaning ion generator. But it doesn't mention the fact that filters will have to be replaced more frequently and did not provide any information about that. And most of the other board members who participated on, who participated in this had questions about mold, had questions about whether or not by solving one problem, you're creating others. And I really think that we need to look more deeply into this. And I went to another class that had five people I'm in that would be exactly the kind of person you're speaking to. There was a sustainability consultant. There was the head of the New Jersey School Buildings Association. And there were several people who have made, you know, environmental consultants have basically had a long career in these things. And not one of them was in favor of this. And if you would like to meet tomorrow, I could bring in a tape of that meeting and you could get the advice from five people who were all basically saying that it's a new technology. There might be unintended consequences. And that it's an accessory. It doesn't substitute for a good system of ventilation that provides the right amount of air for a room of a particular size. It's not a one-size-fits-all situation. You can't put a unit on top of a bad system. And you have to look at what rooms were designed for. And they actually said the same thing about air purifiers, that they're very good at improving airflow, but it might not have any impact on COVID. And with all of these people, you know, one of the things was they said it's an accessory. It's not a, you know, it's not a substitute for a good system. And what, what they're recommending is you fix the suit before you buy the earrings. It's many things that are going on in the school buildings in terms of downsizing the use of the buildings is helpful. Scheduling occupancy, those kinds of things are important. But the most important thing is you've got to keep the air moving. And every single type of addition to the, you know, to the basic system that was built is not necessarily going to solve problems and could be creating others. So they were talking about a holistic approach to dealing with airflow in the school buildings. And I think when you're talking about a half a million or a million dollars, I think that's what we need to be talking about. Every single place is unique. I don't really think that we can extrapolate what goes on in other areas for the system that we have here and the problems we have here. And certainly not with new technology that hasn't been tested very well in schools. But anyway, if you would like to see the tapes of those meetings, I could bring them in tomorrow if you have time.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Hill, you had more?
I have one more follow-up question to Mr. Gillette, who said that the ionization only works in the UNA vent, something? Univents, and it's only when they're on?
Yeah.
So, so that's like half a year? So I don't get it. Like, why is, like, why is ionization even being considered? It's like only in the winter? I mean, like, am I missing something? That's what I'm wondering. Or is it like, am I missing something?
So Tony did say that they were looking to see whether they could use the univents just for fans and not for heating. So, and at the last meeting, it seemed like they had gotten a positive response about that. So you could turn the univent on without a heater so that it could be in the, in the fall or the spring. And this would also be operational during air conditioning as well. So if, we are assuming at the time that we made this, the decision, or the Operations Committee did, I'm not a voting member of that committee, but I was there for the meeting, we anticipated being able to use it for the full school year.
So have, have people, well, let me rephrase the question. Has it been calculated the cost of buying air, HEPA? Air purifiers for the 75% of classrooms that are not affected by the referendum?
Mr. Wasney said they were a lot more expensive than the ionizers, but he did not give a, a level of.
Right, so, so I don't know anything about HEPA air purifiers except for what I, my friend told me, that they bought a HEPA round. So it's like a 360-degree air purifier that draws an air from all sides of the room. They put it in the middle of his child's room. $300? Now, I don't know how large that space is. I think that they're sized per space. But I would love, so I'm not in favor of the ionization part right now, but I would love to see a comparison of an available, and, well, let me, let me see. Maybe not on the shelf because obviously people, a lot of people are buying it. But what would it cost in general for a HEPA air purifier sized for the classroom? Might be different. And then compare that to half a billion dollars? Recognizing that both systems need filters that are going to be updated. But the benefit of the HEPA air purifier, I'm guessing, is that the, the person who's in the room will get to make sure it's on. And they would feel a lot better. I mean, I can't hear you. So that's my comment.
Plus it's proven.
Oh, yes, plus it's proven because actually, so where I, where I learned about it is, a friend's husband works for Boeing, and they sent the whole study about like COVID in airplanes and, and why you, basically, where it came to be was that the airflow in an airplane, they change it so many times that basically they have to mix, they have to recirculate air, but then the outside air, so this goes through the filter, basically. And it's like 99. whatever nine-something percent that it traps COVID in. And it's really well-proven. I'm finished, thank you.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Just, just one question to follow up on that, Mr. Hill. You're suggesting putting an expensive piece of filtering equipment in the middle of the classroom? How many are we going to lose over the course of the school year? I mean, we don't put equipment in the middle of classrooms because we don't want them to get damaged, knocked over, kids accidentally fall on them. You know, we have to be careful about what we're going to spend on equipment that we would then plant right in the middle of the classroom and get hurt. When we look at these things, it's not as simple as comparing to what you might do at home in your child's bedroom, what you would do in a classroom that is going to have some number of people moving about. So I think we have to also consider the, how you actually implement those plants. And putting, to me, putting a, a high-quality air purifier in the middle of the room that can get knocked around or kicked or knocked over is not an efficient way to spend our money because we're going to end up replacing a lot of those as they get broken.
So the version that I saw was $300 by Honeywell. And that's comparable to what a Chromebook costs, so.
But I would imagine that our classrooms are probably four to six times larger than a child's bedroom. So I doubt that that size.
I don't know, I mean, I heard some quotes that were like, what was it? 20 by what? Some kids' bedrooms.
I paced up.
I don't want to argue back and forth, but the point is, if you, if the board wants to make an investment in it and wants to investigate, I think we should. Figuring out like how it's actually going to be implemented is secondary. It's whether or not we think that it's a good investment or not.
I have to disagree. Figuring out how we're going to do it is not secondary. If figuring out how we're going to do it means it costs three times as much as we first thought, that's not secondary. And I'm not saying we can't do this. But you can't say we won't think about how we would actually do it when how we actually do it could greatly increase the cost. We have to consider that. It's not secondary. It's part of the whole plan. Which, by the way, is why we have our architects do a whole plan. If we want to do something, we need to consider all aspects of it, not just the cost of equipment, the cost of installation, the cost of repair, and how long are they going to live? It's not secondary. All that.
And how effective that technology is.
Absolutely.
Right now, we, and right now, we heard a proposal for ionization that hasn't even been proven.
I'm not, I didn't, wait, I'm sorry. I didn't at any point say I wanted to do ionization. My point is, you can't say figuring out how we would do it is secondary. How we do it costs money. How we spend our money is not secondary. We have to consider all that at the same time.
I disagree with you, Mr. Pulsifer. I think that if you think an idea, if we as the board think an idea is worth pursuing, we should pursue it and then figure out the secondary cost to it. Of course, that would.
But it's not secondary. The best idea in the world, if it costs us $50 million, doesn't matter, right? Can we agree that we don't have $50 million to spend? So the best idea in the world, if it costs $50 million, it doesn't matter how good the idea is, right? So you can't say that the cost is secondary.
So all I asked in the beginning was that if we are considering spending half a million dollars on ionization, that we have a comparative analysis with HEPA air purifiers that are a proven technology. And then you brought up the point that these are expensive materials that would be put in the middle of the classroom that would, might be, got, might be knocked over by children or damaged in some way, shape, or form. And I then countered with, that is something that we would have to address. I disagree with you that it would be cost prohibitive. I think that children are, I think the biggest problem would be tripping over the wire. I don't think that there's any, I mean, children take care of their Chromebooks all the time, and there is insurance for it, et cetera. So I don't understand your objection to investigating this proposal.
I didn't object to investigating. I just added one more set of questions that should be part of the investigation. That's all I added.
Then I agree with you, Mr. Pulsifer.
I have one more comment. The class that I took, the class that I took also discussed air purifiers. And they said that if you put a purifier in a room where somebody has COVID, the unit is now contaminated with COVID. They were very, very strong about any accessory features that would be added to a system where the system is not being managed correctly. So anything you add to it is just going to be a visual safety feature, but it's not actually safe. And I really think that we need to get this right. You know, most of our schools were built way before our time here. And they were built to minimum standards. And this is not unique to Hillsborough. This is just the way the code was back in the day. And it's the way people continue to build. I mean, we've seen prices for, you know, top-of-the-line LEED-certified school buildings. They're outrageous. We'd never get there with our community. But the best is, we're reaping the problems now of 50-year-old decisions. And we're trying to do the best we can. But I really think we need to look at the ventilation system and not add things onto it that may collapse the system and not solve the problem. So I really agree with what I heard, which was a holistic approach to getting this done correctly for once and for all, instead of just continually adding additional strains to the system. That's it.
Any other questions on any of the committee reports before we move to public comment? Okay, so we very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be a period of time that the meeting will be open for public comment. Where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do via Zoom, in person if they are attending in person, or via written comment, sent via letter or email to boepubliccomments@https.us. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes, or may comment on any or, any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights Act of public employees encompass therein, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. A bit of process. I will take comments from people in the room first. And I don't know if people want to use their device, or they can come up to the Chromebook. We ask that you don't touch the Chromebook. I will unmute. I will also add video. If you're using your own device, that I will do the same there. You can raise, you can raise your hand using the raise hand option in Zoom. Or for those people in the room, you could raise your hand and I will recognize you. But please allow me, thank you, Ms. Salander, please allow me the time to make you a panelist, unmute, turn your video on. And then at the end of your comment, I will then make you an attendee again. Is that clear? You can sit right there. You don't have to go up there, okay? But once, the problem is, is that once I turn, once that gets turned off, it needs to be touched again to unmute and add video. So if you, it would be preferable to me, frankly, it would be an assistance to do it from your chair if that, if that is amenable to you. So I saw Ms. Salander. I will make you a participant. I, sorry, a panelist.
Good?
Yes.
Amy Salander, I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School and the HKA treasurer. Good evening, members of the board. I would like to address how our district is reacting and responding to instances where an individual tests positive for the COVID-19 virus, specifically in regards to quarantining and contact tracing. The words "contact tracing" appear 22 times in the district's restart and recovery plan to reopen schools. The plans include protocols such as designating an official contact tracer for each school and working closely with the DOH when positive cases are confirmed. To date, our district has reported 12 confirmed positive cases of COVID-19 in our schools. There have been many questions about how the protocols stated in the district plan have been followed. For example, on page 41, the sixth bullet states, quote, "If a student slash staff member tests positive for COVID-19, students slash teachers in the classroom of an infected student slash staff member attended will also be quarantined, quarantined," end quote. I can state for a fact that this protocol has not been followed in at least four cases. While those involved have seek clarification on this, a clear response has not been provided. It is my understanding that our district is following the guideline of only quarantining individuals considered close contacts or someone who is within six feet of a known positive, positive individual for at least 10 minutes. While I can appreciate there are guidelines set forth by the CDC, I question how this criteria is being measured. For example, what about cases where people are in the same classroom with a COVID-positive individual for up to 106 minutes a day? It is also important to note, as Dr. Intunez did earlier, that the CDC has updated its guidelines recently, and those guidelines seem to address this type of scenario. It was my understanding that in the case of a student testing positive, the contact tracing is being conducted by administrators asking the teachers present in the classroom if the student was within six feet for 10 minutes or more of other individuals. Sounds easy enough, right? Teachers right now are being pulled in so many different directions. We are monitoring students. We are monitoring students at home and in our classes. We are checking HepA and other apps we may have been using. We are trying to keep up with pace and guides and rigor, while also balancing the SEL needs of our students. At no point were we asked to track how long our students may have been within six feet of each other. Keep in mind that while some classrooms have only two or three people in them at a time, others have up to 14. Now, let's get back to that contact tracing meeting. The teachers asked if they recall whether or not a student was within six feet of anyone for more than 10 minutes. In some cases, it's been five days since the teacher last saw the student. I, for one, would not be comfortable stating with 100% certainty how close my students were almost a week after last seeing them. Could I answer with somewhat certainty for the class time? Maybe. But I wouldn't be able to state with confidence what may have happened in the hallways, or snack time with no masks, or outside during a lunch or recess period. Imagine saying everything was fine, and then another student tests positive. That's quite a burden to place on a teacher. What can we do? Well, for starters, we should be reviewing the district plan and creating some user-friendly checklists from it to ensure consistency from building to building. Next, we should consider how to determine who to deem a close contact. I would argue to err on the side of caution in this case. For example, in a, in a classroom of 12 people, where one individual tests positive, it is the district's practice right now to only notify anyone that may have come within six feet or 10, for 10 minutes or more.
Ms. Salander-
No one else gets-
Yes. You've, you've gone over three minutes. Can you, are you finishing up soon?
Yeah, I, I am. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
No one else gets notified that they were in a room with a COVID-positive individual, even though page 41 of the district plan states otherwise. And while the district may not be able to force a quarantine unless it meets the six-foot, 10-minute guideline, I know as a parent myself, I would like as much information as possible to make my own decisions regarding my child's health and safety. Dr. Swetan, you have mentioned on more than one occasion that one of the charges of our staff is to relay to the board what bends. From my view, what seems to be bending are some of the guidelines and protocols. And as for the staff, I, I need to share with all of you that many of us are about to break. I respectfully ask that you revisit the protocols and consider some of the points I raised tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Salander. Recognizing Mr. Goodhue, I will raise you to panelist, and then find you on the list. There we go. Hey, Mr. Good, yes?
Thank you. Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. Before I get to my comments, I would like to note that this is now the second board meeting where we've been told the public will be able to speak to items that are, uh, before they are voted on. And this is now the second meeting where a resolution that impacts the public's access to the board and their ability to speak to them has been moved and voted on prior to our ability to speak to it. Now, as I look at the meeting tonight, one of the things that strikes me is that I highly doubt that the members of the board would feel comfortable being here if there was uncertainty surrounding the implementation of COVID screening procedures of the attendees. Or if they would feel comfortable to attend the meeting if it was moved to another location with far less square footage where participants were encouraged to remove their masks and eat a snack for a period of time ranging from eight to 25 minutes. Yet this is what our members and students have been asked to do each day. Should the community be comforted by the fact that board leadership has instituted stricter guidelines for themselves than they do for staff and students? The Hillsborough Roadback Plan was presented to the community as a foundation to reopen our schools. It is no secret that we took issue with the minimal standards that the plan was built upon, but now see that we have failed to even meet those. The plan is clearly aspirational at best, if not empty, as members were told the district does not have to follow its own guidelines unless the Department of Health demands that they do so. Regardless of outside recommendations, these recommend, these guidelines were drafted and put into the plan, so why fail to follow them? Or were they created only for the plan and not for reality? The plan also specifies that all staff will be provided with PPE. This is still something that the district has failed to do and has claimed is fiscally irresponsible. Recently, nearly $800 was spent for four board members to attend virtual seminars. While I'm sure that this was valid, and I do not contest their ability to go, I would, and I will not belabor the refusal to provide masks further, but I cannot help but note that this amount could have been used to buy nearly 400 of the $2 masks that we've often heard of, yet no such action was taken. Districts like Bridgewater and Princeton have embraced open communication and attempted to accommodate staff to the best degree. Princeton created a process for reconsidering virtual accommodations for staff, already granting 25 requests with more being considered. Princeton has also decided to work with union leadership in accommodating as many staff members as possible. Conversely, our district has embraced punitive approach to staff requests and continues to, to deny reasonable accommodations even at the expense of continuity within the classroom. These districts have made a decisions based upon an abundance of caution and a responsibility to protect the health of students and staff. Yet with more than double the cases of neighboring districts, ours has endeavored to find loopholes to undermine the already minimal standards. When faced with the need to change your approach to a situation and have stricter, safer guidelines, our district has chosen to embrace the problematic practices, decreased communication, and a lack of transparency and honesty. I have said this before, but I have never meant it more now. Our community deserves better. And I will also note that my time is up, but I would like to recognize that the HEA brought forward concerns about ventilation and ashtray regulations, as well as ways to address that in November, and they were dismissed in the reopening meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else present? Want to make a comment? Mrs. Volano? Hold on.
Good evening, Board of Education. Numbers, can you hear me? I have headphones in. Um, my name is Kelly Volano, 87 Meadowbrook Drive, sixth-grade teacher here at Otten Road. After multiple requests, um, in letters to the Board of Education and the administration, I was happy to see Dr. Antunes, Dr. Felchery, and Mr. Callahan come in to visit my class last week. However, I was disappointed that no one followed up with me to talk about what is working and what is not working teaching in these conditions, which was the reason for my request. This leaves me wondering why you really came. Thank you.
Anybody else present? We have a few attendees on the, the Zoom meetings. Dana Gordon, I will recognize you and promote you to panelist now. Go ahead, Dana.
There I am. Hi. All right. Hi, I'm Dana Gordon for Dumont Round. I'm alarmed at the increasing cases at our school, and they have not, and that we have not considered delaying activities or closing for the safety of staff and students. The past week and today, we've had seven cases, student-aged residents. That would be the 10 to 19. Of those, the district reported two of them to us. Are we only reporting cases of students who are hybrid? Since virtual students are able to attend or participate in school activities such as sports or school pictures, or pick up books or items from the school, all students should be included in these numbers. Will you advise us if staff who do not reside within Hillsborough have tested positive? I see in the spreadsheet it says there are COVID-19 cases reported by the local health official that affect our schools. Will they be providing you with information about out-of-town staff as well? I've been reading about neighboring districts and how they are handling these new cases. Many of the districts are looking at specific schools where the cases came from and not closing all the schools in that district. This limits the disruption to school when they're not showing cases. Princeton closed the high school due to three cases not related to school. They paused the soccer team. Bridgewater closed the high school after three cases. Now Bridgewater said it well in their announcement, which you can find on their district website. It actually comes up right when you go into it. In addition to the Central West portion of the state is currently experiencing moderate levels of COVID-19 transmission based on the most recent COVID-19 activity level report dated week ending October 17th, 2020. This is a measure of risk of the community spread and indicates that the level is higher than ideal, thus increasing a chance that disease will spread more rapidly in the school setting. Bridgewater has a very logical and proactive approach. Are we taking into account that not only is our region experiencing a risk level that is higher than ideal? Are we looking at the township as a whole that has seen huge increases? Last week, we had a total of 32 cases. The week before, 29. We are beginning this week with 12 new cases today. We are well over that five cases per 100K that Dr. Mendelbaum had spoken about. Looking at the trend in our town, the risk of our region, and the amount of cases in the school, I'm surprised that we're accepting this level of risk and staying open. Thank you.
Recognizing Sarah. Um, Sarah, when I recognize you, please state your full name and address.
Sorry, I had some technical difficulty.
No problem.
I'm Sarah Young. I am a teacher at Otten Road, fifth grade, special ed. So these past few weeks, when you heard the sounds of students in classrooms and hallways, what has it made you think of? I think of many, I think many of us have been happy to hear some normalcy, the chatter of students and teachers. It reminds us of what school should be. I think of these things too. I love teaching my students in person with all of my peers. But against a backdrop of these cheerful lessons, I hear the beating of something that I have learned all too well that's haunted me every day since I lost my father to COVID on Labor Day. Sorry. I hear the gaping compressions of the ventilator. I see the snake, the tube snaking down my dad's throat. As he lay there inert, the crisp wires crisscrossing him as he lights a David in a cold, lonely hospital bed. And I had to witness all of this, his final hours from a nurse holding a shaking iPad. My father stayed home unless he went to the supermarket. He wore a mask and gloves. He changed his clothes and showered once he got home. He washed his hands often and used hand sanitizer. But when we're talking about a highly infectious disease, we're all at the mercy of biology. I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry for your loss, but take a moment to compose yourself. And I'm happy to let you go past three minutes, so please just-
After losing my dad to, to the disease, to be aware, there are positive cases in the building fills me with great fear for my students, their families, and my colleagues. Why are people not being asked to quarantine for the recommended 14 days? As an academic institution, it falls on us to learn from science. We know that this virus can develop two to 14 days after contact. Why are those who were in the classroom not all being told that there was a positive case in their child or student's classroom, especially when the CDC has recently revised its guidelines to state that the virus is transmissible through the air? Having worked in this township for six years, I know that you guys are all capable leaders who have been, have seen our students and staff through other trying circumstances. I am calling on you now to just do that. Lead us in a way that protects us, not a way that puts more people and their families at risk. I urge you with all of my heart. I don't want anyone to feel the pain and grief that I feel every waking moment of my life. I don't want either my students or their families, my colleagues' families, to be afflicted by this disease. I implore you to make proactive choices that will protect those under your care, particularly actions that are proactive rather, rather than reactive. These will save people's lives in a fear of the more difficult decisions to make. As the weather's cools, as the weather cools down, various countries in Europe have entered new lockdowns, and health officials in the US are warning that small gatherings are rapidly spreading the disease. Nearby districts are closing down temporarily after a few positive cases. It is now time to make decisions to enact 100% online remote school days until it is safer. Thank you for your time, and I'm really sorry for like freaking death.
I'm so sorry for your loss, Ms. Young. I see no other attendees, um, raising their hand. Um, I do have one submitted report as, sorry, um, public comment from Marilyn Julian. Greetings. Pre-COVID-19, HHS and Somerset County VOTEC were on the same schedule. Pan-COVID-19, each school is on its own schedule, forcing students and their families to juggle schedules and choose which classes to attend on competing days. See below, and she does include, um, her son's schedule. It is physically impossible for my son to be in two places at the same time since he is forced to miss some classes either at HHS or, or the VOTEC. Will these absences be counted against him? Will the school schedules be synchronized in the future? Or will this continue? This is not really a board issue as, um, you know, in terms of chain of command, it should have been sent, um, more appropriately to the, to, um, her son's guidance counselor or, um, to the principal. I have forwarded that and hope that they will follow up. With, with that, I should expand on that. It's important to recognize that not, not all issues are taken up by the Board of Education. The Board is made up of nine community members, um, that are selected by the community. We're neighbors and nonpartisan. We receive no pay or benefits for our public service. We serve a dual role. We represent the concerns of the citizens, taxpayers, and parents to the school administrators, and to represent the needs of the students and school district to the citizens, taxpayer, and parents of the community. We don't operate the district on a day-to-day basis. That's the job of the superintendent, who is our, um, the district's chief executive. Rather, the school board sets the policy and goals. We adopt the budget for the district and hold the superintendent responsible for implementing the policies and achieving the goals. So when we operate, when we talk about chain of command, if there's a problem with a teacher, a parent has a problem with the teacher, they should of course first contact the teacher. If the issue is not resolved, the parent should turn to the principal or supervisor, then to the superintendent. The school board is really the, the court of last resort, and most times individuals can get answers to their questions simply by calling the appropriate person in the, in the school district. So, um, I'm hopeful that Ms. Julian's, um, email will be addressed, um, by those who it should have more probably been addressed to. In terms of, uh, I'm going to close public comment then. And maybe we can just clarify a couple of things. First of all, with regard to the resolution that was passed today, I would have loved to have been given by the, um, by the state, the opportunity to, uh, which is what they would normally do, as, as Mr. Lapira had said, to say that by this date, you need to enact the, you know, some, some things in order to operate a meeting according to that new, those new procedures. That was not the case. We had to act on that resolution. But obviously, you know, your, your comments on how we operate in the future would be taken into account, uh, when we pass a resolution for how we operate in the future. The, um, there were a couple of thing, a couple of questions regarding the Roadback Plan and why that one particular part of the Roadback Plan that says that we're going to quarantine all individuals in a, in a room with a positive test. I should note that that was written in three weeks in July and the, and that would, I think, that has changed with regard to the Department of Health's recommendation. For those, uh, at home, Dr. Antunes is shaking her head. For those at home, Dr. Antunes is shaking her head. Yes, shaking her head up and down, yes. So I don't, you haven't spoken in a while, so you're not probably on their Zoom screen. I, I heard Mrs. Salinger make the recommendation of a user-friendly, friendly checklist. I actually like that idea and, and hope that maybe the administration would, would consider that. And potentially. Work with. The administration who actually asked teachers. To, to provide information on contract tracing. To sort of maybe. Get their feedback and, and. And obviously, Ms. Salinger, if you had more specifics, it would be. Useful for you to send those. The. With regard to. What's happening in Bridgewater and Princeton, it's. My. Information from the Department of Health here that. They had very specific reasons to close, which were that they could not identify the source of the COVID. And so their, their concerns were that. It was coming from something or someone in the school. In all instances. Am I correct that? Our cases that we have had to date have been identified as being obtained from out, from a source outside the school district. Which is, which is why we have not. Taken a more conservative approach and, and quarantined greater numbers or closed the school.
Correct. I can't speak to that for Princeton, but I can affirm for Bridgewater that that was indeed the case.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. The. The question on will out-of-town staff be counted in our. In our counts? I would assume that our Department of Health would follow up with them regarding contact tracing, so they would count. Is that correct? Yes, so that is an answer of yes. Ms. Young. I am. So sad, I mean. So sad to hear about your loss and I. You know, I understand that there are so many people who are. Who are fearful. And rightly so. This is a disease that has taken two hundred and twenty thousand Americans. Lives and many of them being elderly, many of them being minorities, both of whom we have in our community, obviously. It is imperative that everybody in our community take this seriously. I have heard things anecdotally about people who. Who have tested positive, who have not been truthful about their tests. Not, I'm not saying with regards to school, the school. You know. A, as a public health professional myself, as a public infectious disease researcher. I am astonished that people would not be taking this seriously. We. That being said. You know, our. Teachers, our staff, our, most of our families who are, who are engaging in hybrid learning. Are taking. Just an incredible. Approach and, and really being responsible. And a lot of the burden of, of what's happening with regard to. Having to. Having to monitor that is falling on our staff and, and that, that is, I'm sure. Just incredible in terms of. The additional work, the additional stress. I am sympathetic to that. And. You know, I think the parents, especially those who. Who, who have their kids back in school. Have been expressing their appreciation for the work, day in and day out, the teachers are doing. And I would like to. Join them in, in expressing that appreciation. I think that. You know. In order for us to get through this, especially through the fall and the winter. We have to work together in order to. You know, to. Remain vigilant, to remain. Personally responsible for our actions. And I really do want to encourage. Everybody to. Take a harder look at what's going on in your household every day. There were some questions about. Why we couldn't. I think Ms. Gordon had said, you know, let people know, and I know Ms. Kelly had sent an email also about this. Specifically, if, you know, there was a child in Ms. Filano's class, why couldn't we send an email to that, to those parents in that class? That was something that we worked on. I personally talked to Dr. Antunes about that because when I saw Ms. Kelly's email. I said, why aren't we doing that? You know, we should be doing that. Dr. Antunes agreed and, you know, and, you know, but we went to the Department of Health who said that. Given the small numbers that we have, we were even thinking, could we do it? In a grade level, could we say a sixth grade child or a third grade child at Sunnymeat or something like that? Unfortunately, we were told in no uncertain terms that we could not give that level of detail, even though I think it would be something that as a parent with a child in a classroom, I would want to know. Not that it might change, I mean, it might change my perspective and say, you know what, there could be something started in that classroom, I'll keep you home. But even more so. So that I am sure, positive, every morning that I am doing everything I can to ensure that you, as my child. Is not symptomatic. In any way. And prevent the possible spread. I hope that's what parents are doing when they hear about a positive case in a school. You shouldn't have to know about that level of detail. If there, there are positive cases in Hillsborough. And so every morning, if you are putting your child on a bus or if you are driving your child to school. You know, please note. Everything, every detail about whether your child, is this a normal? Day for your child? I, I said in a committee meeting that. I, as a child, had bronchitis a lot and my mother, if she thought I was symptomatic, would make me sing a song with a high note in it, and if I didn't get a high note. Then she knew that something was coming. And so, you know, I, we all know our children best. And especially when, when teachers in our school can't. See, see your child without a mask. It's not their responsibility. It is your responsibility to ensure that you are sending. What you believe to be a healthy child to school. So. I do, you know, encourage all of our parents to. To be uber vigilant about ensuring that they're, are only sending their child to school. As healthy, as individuals. Board comment, yes, Mr. Hea.
So I have a comment about. The close contact. Portion, so my child. Was considered a close contact. We were contacted by Siobhan. And told that she needed to quarantine for fourteen days, which she did, so she'll be able to go to school on Thursday. But then I. Called. Some other students' parents that were in the classroom. And they were not informed. So I agree that the, so I assume basically that. On page forty-one, as Mrs. Salinger had said, that that statement is not true, that not all. Students and teachers in the classroom will be quarantined. My child was quarantined because. They could not determine if she had been. More than six feet away, even though she was wearing, both children were wearing masks the entire time. And so I was going on the CDC website, so apparently it's more important. To be more than six feet apart because they say that they do not. Use a differential determination of face coverings. To consider close contact, so that was a surprise.
I think everything is changing now. I mean, you know, even in the last week. It went from six feet away and ten minutes to. Six feet away and a, and a total of fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period or something like that, so. You know, as we learn more about this virus and how it's transmitted, things are going to, things are going to change, just like in July, we were taking a very cautious approach. With what we wrote in the road back plan and that. Was eased a bit based on. What the Board of, Board of Health was telling us to do. You know, at some, sometimes there's going to be. You know, instances where out of an abundance of caution, things are going to change and that could have been. What your child was sort of swept up in, that maybe she was sitting closest or something like that and I, I, I can't speak to the specific situation, though. You know, I, I think. For everybody's sake, we should, we should take the most conservative approach. I think that's what the Department of Health is in fact doing. Any other comments? Mrs. Stats.
As I've stated before, well. I, I am concerned that every, every meeting we have more and more. People are requesting leaves. Not to mention past meetings where we see a list of people requesting leaves or asking for. Or resigning or retiring. So I do worry about the, the effect of the learning of our children. And I, I, I worry that we are following the letter of the law, we're doing all this legally, but. And we're worried about setting, perhaps worrying about setting precedent, but. I mean, there is a spectrum of where we can follow the letter of the law. And, but still have a. A scale of, of what's needy. As far as, especially for the sake of our, our, our students. And, and the well-being of our staff and students. To at least be able to accommodate. Some of the teachers. To teach virtually. Also, I. I'm going from my memory, so that's not a good thing, but I thought the road back plan was. Or the reopening plan was that all masks. Mask breaks and snack times would occur outside. But apparently there. Seems to be a significant amount of time where children are not wearing their masks, I guess for the sake of, of snacks. That's the concern for me. And also. I, I can understand why you would not want to tell the whole community. About any specific class that, where there's a positive COVID case. But I wonder if it's possible just to contact. The, the teacher. And the parents of the students. The other students in the class. Besides the ones who are in close contact, just for their own sake and so that they can make, especially the parents can make a decision. Out of concern to maybe go virtual because their child.
Wasn't. We were told specifically that we could not do that.
You can't even tell the, the parents of that, just that class?
That is what, yeah, that is what we wanted to do, yeah.
Okay.
And we were told specifically, we could not do that, so. That's unfortunate, but I, because, you know, the thing is, is that a teacher's gonna know, I, you know, the teacher will know.
Well, eventually, because I mean, kids are going to be absent. For regular reasons anyway, so eventually they'll catch on after a few times.
The teacher's gonna know because they're gonna be asked for contact tracing, so they're gonna.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Know immediately. So, but, you know, the other parents will eventually find out because Suzie won't have been in class for whatever, you know, I mean, our kids come home. At least my kids, I had girls though, so I mean, would come home and tell me everything of the goings-on. I don't know if that's. These days because classes, classroom is so different, but. I think eventually people will know, but it is unfortunate that we can't go to the rest of the class and tell them. I absolutely agree with you.
Okay. Thanks for verifying that.
Mrs. Truha.
Well, Mr. Gillette has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gillette.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about teacher requests for accommodations that came up during the public comment. So I talked about this a little bit at our last board meeting three weeks ago. And it's my view that, and I know we're following everything legally, as Mr. Callahan is dealing with. ADA, I believe, and other requirements when looking at requests for accommodations, but. We can bypass all of that. Just by creating some. New positions. That are virtual teacher. And posting them. And having the. Teachers that need that position interview for it. And give them the position. It could be for a, a, amount of time, a limited amount of time. If what you say goes from. I don't know, December first to. April first or whatever, wherever you want it to be, and if it needs to be. Extended, it could be extended. Then we'd bypass everything. We wouldn't have to worry about ADA, we wouldn't have to worry about. Setting precedence with accommodations or anything. Just do it already. This is, it's, it's almost. Obnoxious. That we, that we have, kids have to take like in, a, a class provided by like an online provider at the high school. Because the teacher couldn't get an accommodation. Why need, why, why even make the teacher ask for an accommodation? Just, I mean, we need, we need some cooperation from the teachers as a whole. Don't go bidding on that job if you don't really need it. You know, if you need that virtual job, only those teachers should. Interview for it. You have to, I see some teachers in the audience who you'll have to figure that out among yourselves, call each other up and say, hey. That one's mine. But I mean, that would bypass everything. We could just do it. Why don't we do it? As many as we need. And, and just, and just have it done already. I, I, I think it's, it's wording on, on the stupid not to do it. Thank you.
Who was first on there? Mrs. Stats, then Mr. Hea, and then Mr. Oliver, or Mrs. Stats, Mr. Oliver, and then Mr. Hea.
And Mr. Gillette, I appreciate your, your generosity of a suggestion. But there are some positions where, or at least one I can think of, where. There wouldn't even be a line of people that would apply for it. There's only, there would be only one person. And for that reason alone, just logistically, it would just make sense to. Have that teacher teach virtually and have a creative way to, to deal with how we pay for. Obviously, you'd have to have someone manage the students that are in the classroom. That are there for in-person learning. But they wouldn't have the full responsibilities of. Of a substitute. Because they would not be. In charge of the children's learning. They would just be there as a presence. To make sure. They are, that the children are behaving properly, I guess. So anyway, I appreciate your generous suggestion.
Mr. Oliver.
So, you know, to that point, just a couple of comments. I, I think it's imperative that we do not lose good quality teachers because of age. Or compromised situation. If, if we could make accommodations as Ms. Stats and Mr. Gillette have made. Recommendations for. This is a crazy world and we need to think outside the box. You know, the one thing that I continue to, to sit up here and look at and see. Is our students. You know, that's the most important thing is our students. I understand there are some teachers that are fearful for this. There are some teachers that are compromised and I think we could think outside the box, but we have to think outside the box to the point where. If we make an accommodation for a teacher to be virtual. There needs to be someone that sits in that classroom to monitor that classroom. And, and I think we have lunch aids, we have bus drivers, we have phys ed teachers, we have a multitude of people who are maybe not doing a lot. And they could be put in those situations. You know, the cost of hiring a sub to let someone teach virtual becomes a problem, but, but again, we need to come up with a solution. We don't need to continue to talk about the problems. Our kids need to get back in school. You know, they're, they're two days a week in a hybrid model. My girls would love to be four or five days a week. Other districts have done four or five days a week and, and they're working with it just fine. There are parents that are fearful for sending their kids and I get that. You have a virtual model for them. But let's not lose sight of the fact that children want to be in school four or five days a week. You know, maybe Mr. LaPerry could touch on the fact that HIPAA laws are very, very specific to this. And we have to be careful about disclosing confidential medical information. It, it, it's not that we don't want to share it, but as Dr. Son said, the most important thing. Is the moms out there, the dads too. We know our kids. We, we know when that kid wakes up in the morning, whether he's got a temperature, whether he's not feeling good, whether he's a little under the weather. Don't send him to school. Let him stay home. Parents need to be responsible. I remember when my girls were small and we would go to the beach. And I'm not a good swimmer, so I would always stay near the lifeguards. But that didn't stop me from watching my girls because there was a lifeguard out there watching them. I watched my girls myself. So we need to watch our own children. We need to be cognizant because we're protecting them and we're protecting all of the other ones. The last comment I have tonight, which again is going to be a little bit frustration. But. We're, we're missing the point of these children and these children are losing. Valuable, precious. Time that they're never going to get back. I graduated high school in nineteen seventy-seven. It feels like it was yesterday. It went by in the blink of an eye. And our children are experiencing the best times of their lives and the worst times of their lives. They're going through. They're going through a pandemic we haven't seen in a hundred years. And they're losing precious days and moments as we speak. Junior prom, senior prom, graduation, inner school activities, sports. And what do I see tonight is we're missing out on a tradition of seniors making a statement in a yearbook. We're continuing to take away little things that are non-COVID related from our students when they're experiencing tremendous disappointments in the best years of their lives. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Was there any other board? Yeah, Mr. Truhea?
I really liked Mr. Gillette's suggestion also. And I'm wondering if there's a way to move that forward as a motion. I, tonight, I must be the luckiest board member to have a student who is affected by this virtual, virtual, um, teaching. So my child has, is being taught by a computer, but like with nobody behind it. We get a periodic phone calls that say, your child has completed X percent and they should be completing Y percent and they're blah, 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 on track, on not on track, whatever. Then I find out that that grade actually is not gonna count and so I think, and I haven't said anything because I don't wanna mix the two of being a parent and a board member so my child suffers. Because I, I would have been vocal about this situation if I were not a board member. And we have had some parents write to us. So it's frustrating for me. And so now we have a very good suggestion from Mr. Gillette that would solve this at least one particular problem that would benefit. We, I mean, we all know who the teacher is. Well, maybe not the public, but. So, so I would like to make a motion perhaps in the main portion, the action portion of the agenda to, to create such a position, although I would like to give the administration, as I remember in March 2017, give the administration time to consider that. The second comment that I have is I don't understand, Ms. Dr. Sisson, when you said that we cannot identify the classrooms that have COVID. I don't, who said that? Because in, during a case of when, I remember when the children were in elementary school and lice was rampant in the schools. I'm pretty sure we got a letter from the school nurse that said, your child's classroom was lucky one. Make sure you check your child's hair.
This was the depart, that was, this was the Department of Health.
This is Hillsborough Department of Health?
It is. Yeah. So, um, that's, that's all, I mean, basically the answer to the question. Vic, did you wanna say something there? Mr. LaPerry?
Sure. Yeah, let me address that briefly because it's, it is, um, it's a strange thing and I, and I think that it is kind of weird. What we have there is, um, unusual intersection between protecting the privacy rights of the students and protecting the privacy rights of the staff members. So, um, if a staff member were to con, contact COVID, we would not be permitted to tell anybody about that, right? Um, that goes to their privacy rights. Um, so if a student did and, and we envisioned that, well, you know, similar to like a lice type situation, we could notify and say this classroom hazard or whatever. The problem that happens is, so if we notify and they're gonna know that it's a student, if we don't notify and then they find out later, then they're gonna say, oh, well, we, by process of elimination, now we know that it's the teacher, right? So we're, that's why I think the Department of Health has told us, you just can't tell anybody. And of course, it is their responsibility to do the contact tracing and the notification. So our hands are tied there. Um, I think everyone agrees that we would love to be able to provide all of the information as quickly as we could in order to ensure that we're doing the appropriate contact tracing and everything else. But that unfortunately is, is something that is being done by the local boards of health. And I say boards because it's not just in Hillsborough, it's every school district is having the same, um, issue. At least the ones that we represent, that's what we've been seeing. So, um, it's, it, it seems like it should be an easy answer, but when we were asked this question a couple of weeks ago in a different school district, it actually becomes somewhat complicated. And then, so that's one of the reasons why we're not allowed to. And of course, the Department of Health is telling us, no, we do the notifications for contact tracing. You should not get involved. So that's where we are. Um, unfortunately with that. With respect to the other piece, um, the only thing I would say with respect to the, you know, creating a position or what have you, um, just keep in mind, I think that if, if you need the superintendent to look into that issue and make a recommendation, uh, cause I think this came up last time as well. You, you need to have, um, any recommendations about hiring, firing, et cetera. Any, any personnel related recommendations, um, that you're gonna vote upon come from the superintendent, right? Like we can't do that on our own. So, um, so if, if ultimately the, the majority of the board wants the superintendent to look into that issue, that's something that the superintendent's gonna have to do. But I, I don't think we can just go ahead and make that decision for the superintendent this evening. Um, not saying that you should or shouldn't, you know, do what is being recommended. I'm not giving any opinion on that, but I just, in terms of process.
So, so I remember back in March 2017, we voted on making the request to the superintendent to find the funds to create three new guidance counselor positions in the elementary schools. And that happened that year. So that would be what I'm proposing tonight is that we, I don't even know if we have to vote on that, but that would be my request that we would vote on. Uh, I guess, right, the board can direct the superintendent to investigate.
Yes, invest, yeah, investigate the issue. I don't think there's an issue in, in terms of doing that. And then I think as, if, if there's a clear direction on that, then I think that the superintendent needs to come back to the board with a recommendation saying, you've asked me to investigate it and, and report back to you as to whether or not this is feasible or appropriate and, and then make her recommendation.
So do we need to vote on that?
Um, you don't have to take a formal vote. I suppose that what I would say is if there are individuals who are opposed to having the superintendent investigate and report back, we should know if there is anyone. If, um, if not, and then maybe have discussion about it. But, um, you know, that could be, just be something that is determined by assent, right? If, if nobody has any objections to it, then the superintendent will look into that specific issue. Um, along with the Director of Human Resources and seeing how that's possible. And you may need to have a committee meeting on it to make sure you have clarification as to what was specifically being requested to look at. But I, I think that that's probably where it should go, is go to the committee, um, which would probably be the HR committee, I think at this point.
Oh, lucky me, again. So, so going back to your comments about the COVID. So I think the issue, so you said if the staff members get COVID, you cannot tell anyone. If a child gets COVID, you could say that it's in the classroom, but then by process of elimination, if there was another COVID case, you would know that it's the teacher. However, you would not know which teacher it was. So I don't think that that logic holds in my, I'm, I don't think that stands because here's the thing. I'm not hearing parents write to the board saying, I want to know who got COVID. It's the teachers who are saying, I would like to be informed if I wronged-
The teacher, we got one teacher who emailed and said, why aren't you alerting the other parents in the classroom? They, they know. The teacher knows. I'm getting echo, so I don't know where I'm getting echo from, so I apologize if that's coming through, but, um-
So the teacher would like the parents to be informed?
Yes. That was, that was that one letter. But I mean, I, I think Ms. Gordon, you know, said the same thing, that should, that, why isn't the community hearing more? The community being the school community is what I'm assuming she said. Um, learning more specificity about what cases. And with regard to the, to the lice situation, the letter that goes home is one that says, your child was checked for lice because of a, a case in their classroom. And, and so that's actual, an, an actual manipulation of your child. So if my child came home and said that she was brought down and, you know, frisked by a nurse, I'd like, you know, and children say things weird ways, uh, the question's gonna come up. Well, what, you know, what happened? So that is what the letter states. I don't know if that has any bearing. I, I would think that the, that Mr. LaPerry's legal, um, uh, explanation is, is more so. But I, I could see a differentiation there myself. I'm not a lawyer and I do not play one on TV. Um, I, you know, but I, but to me, that's different. If your child is actually brought to a room and checked for something, then it is imperative, uh, upon the school to actually communicate that, um, I would think. So, um, Mr. Pulcifer?
Uh, yes, if I could suggest, I think we should take the, uh, suggestion from Mr. Gillette and Mr. Truhea into the Human Resources Committee. Um, I think there needs to be more research because, um, there, but I, I hear from Mr. Gillette about a number of positions and I think, uh, Mr. Truhea, you were talking about a specific position. I think we really have to have some, uh, look into what we're talking about because, uh, I would be very hesitant to do it for one teacher. Because how do I explain to the teacher who is this close to the same situation that that teacher isn't getting it? Um, we can't look at one teacher's situation. Um, we can't pick out a teacher and do something for a teacher if we aren't willing to do it for all or all that would be in a similar situation. So I think the Human Resources Committee should, uh, work with Dr. Antunes and Mr. Callahan, uh, to evaluate what options there are that would actually, uh, encompass all the teachers in at least a reasonably similar situation, uh, and make sure that we have logistics that would work for them.
Can I, just one last thing and then I'll be quiet for this portion. So to, to your point, Chris, about the which teachers would get that, would get that accommodation or that special created position, I would suggest that a teacher who teaches a very specialized subject in which there, there is no readily available person to take the place of a teacher who now needs to go on leave. I think that would be a starting point.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I think we just have to be careful. What does it mean to be not readily available? They have to drive from Pennsylvania or they, um, they live in Hoboken or, I, what is readily? There's too many of these things that, um, my concern would be, we draw the line somewhere and, uh, another teacher comes up who's just the other side of that line and says, well, why can't I? Um, and, and, and so maybe we say, yes, but now another teacher. And we have to be aware of the fact that what is the domino effect of? Can, we might be able to afford the added cost of somebody in that classroom for two or three or five teachers, but not for 50 teachers. We have to understand what we're saying yes to, to make sure that we can actually apply that fairly. Because I wouldn't wanna be in a position to have to explain to the teacher who is the last one before the cutoff why they aren't getting that accommodation when, and other teachers are, that they feel that they're in an equivalent situation. We have to be able to look at this and make sure that we can apply whatever this decision is fairly to any teacher in that similar situation. And, and I don't know how to evaluate that yet. That's why I think we need, uh, to work with Dr. Antunes and Mr. Callahan to understand what are the things that would come into play in trying to make this happen and what could be limits on what we would be able to do.
Mrs. Stats?
And I would like Mr. Truhea's, uh, suggestion just to be a starting point. I mean, uh, but, uh, I don't want us to be afraid of, of what, like you said, the domino effect. Um, of, of course, we do have to worry about that, but I don't think that should be a deal breaker. Um, as long as we're fair, there will be a line at some point. And yes, there are, there's lines, lots of things that happen in life. And there are people that, uh, satisfy certain condition before the line. There's some that are after the line. But I think it's worth it for at least to, to be able to accommodate, uh, some of the teachers to, uh, teach virtually, uh, for their safety and, but as well as for the learning of our, our students, especially those who are, uh, learning via an online, uh, provider, uh, an, an online, uh, system.
Mrs. Marin?
I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm just really off base here, but is anybody thinking about schedules? Like right now with, as a, as a, as a, in, in students? If, if we really go through with this like mid-year? And how is that fair to a student in one class and not fair to a student in another class to have this offered? And it's, it can change all kinds of, all, all kinds of things that are happening mid-year. Um, it may work in elementary school, but in a high school setting? I just, I can't even wrap my head around this right now because of all the different schedules and all the different levels of classes and, and just the, the equity issues that is just going through my head right now. I can't even keep them all together because I'm just really trying to keep my cool with some other things that I heard tonight. But, um, I, I'm just, I, I don't understand how we could implement this like on the flash like this without, without thinking of how this is, uh, how this is equitable.
Yeah, I would have to agree with you, Mrs. Marin. I, I believe, um, we've had a number of staff members request for various reasons to, uh, work from home. Mr. Callahan, do you have a roundabout number? Is it on the scale of over a hundred, over, you know, what, uh, 50, what?
Of requests to work from home, my office received well over a hundred different requests to work from home from staff.
Uh, we, and we have approximately 700 teachers, is that?
Approximately.
So one in seven. So, I mean, so how do you address that? And how, and who is the determiner of?
Ex- exactly. I mean, I, I would love to accommodate everybody. I'd love to have everybody work from home and in a perfect world, that'd be fantastic. However, that's not the current situation. And I just don't think that it's equitable to, to be doing this in the, you know, end of the first marking period.
Mr. Oliver, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just had a question. So, Mr. Callahan, we had over a hundred requests. That was as of when? That was what date? Off the top of your head, um?
That, that's as of today.
As of today? So have we seen a shift in, in teachers' thoughts of someone to come back into the school and teach the children in person? Do we still think it's a request of a hundred or do we think that request could be 50 or 40? Or i- is that number growing or is it, is it shrinking? Is what my question is.
I, I'm gonna say that it's really stabled out. Um, I think that it likely ballooned when we were nearing the point that we were gonna be officially entering the hybrid period, which, what, what was that date? Was that, um, September 29th? Is that correct? Um, so I think that we ballooned prior to that and that it's largely become a lot quieter, um, since then. Now, some of the leaves that teachers are on eligibility is going to expire when the FF CRA law expires, um, on December 31st. And potentially then we will, uh, we'll be crossing issues again with that, but it has quieted down to answer your question.
And at least in my understanding, weren't a lot of the leaves predicated on childcare issues with schools going virtual in other districts and they didn't have? It wasn't so much a health concern, it was more so a, a childcare issue concern?
Uh, yes, and, and leaves are documented within, within board minutes, I, I would say. So yes, that, that-
And again, I mean-
... Board minutes.
I would think that maybe a starting point might be, because again, it could, a hundred would be overwhelming, but maybe a starting point would be if we could get a survey of teachers and see maybe how many would wanna try to take advantage of a, of a, you know, virtual, you know, maybe that's a starting point. I don't know. I, I mean, I think it's something we need to explore is all I'm saying. I, I'm not saying it's, it's cast in stone, but we have to think outside the box. This is, this is something that, you know, again, it, we, we have to, everything's changing on the fly. We have to work on the fly as well. So that, that's my only suggestion.
I, I think this is, uh, a very good discussion. We're getting points on, on all sides. And to me, that's exactly why we need to actually send this to committee, have some research done by the administration and have a committee meeting and discuss this. Uh, I, I think these are all good ideas. I don't want us to try and take some action tonight when we haven't thought through the side effects. And I agree with you, uh, uh, Mrs. Stats, that we have to draw the line somewhere. I don't wanna draw the line tonight because we're reacting to a specific situation. That's why I'm saying the committee needs to meet, um, have input, discuss it and, and arrive at a line that we've actually put thought into and come up with a good place to draw the line.
Um, I, I don't really have a mechanism, but Mr. Goodhue, I, if you have a comment, I, um, I know, I know you're disconnected. Okay.
Number one, I appreciate the conversation. The obvious answer, this is a recent hobby, and this is a question that we had already. A number of those were predicated on medical, not child, and were met on a year. And a large number of them also have full personal prospects, so there's no pause. Their process of being, if they're nervous, they should be accommodated without any other cause of disability. So the obvious answer is to revisit the requests that have come in and see, can those be accommodated? What is the actual need to the district, whether it be financial or personnel wise, to actually meet that accommodation? As Mr. Oliver said, you're not losing quality staff. Because if we continue on the path that we're on, you will lose those staff. Because I can guarantee you, there are people who walk away, they will not come back in the building. I spoke in today. And we are on the path, this is how we do it. We will attack students much more so than a ship at a different point, or even not attacking at all. Because we're already in a building, and all we're doing is things that need to be recognized as important. And I understand that, and I got a policy, Princeton is a district of five, they had approximately 107, and they found a way to work with that. He can be done too, but he can't. What I'm saying is, here we sit, look at the accommodations that have already come in, figure out what ones tend to be accommodated, figure out what ones don't need to be accommodated anymore, and go from there versus going a different path. And I appreciate the talk, I appreciate the creativity, but there's much more straight forward answer here, and we have the data and the chance to do it ourselves. This is Callahan's office. This is evidence of the duty due, and we don't need to draw that. And I'm happy to go to each R meeting and discuss this, happy to work with Callahan and discuss this. This is an important conversation, and there is obviously a target, and there is not need to be burdened on the district. But I just want to be clear, Princeton, I figured out how to do it, and a number of ours are similar to that, and they are based on state debt and people who appreciate it.
You're welcome. I do want to be clear, though, that the fully virtual, I am unmuted. The fully virtual cohorts that you're talking about are just elementary. And I know a lot of people are talking about positions at other schools that that the one position that we're talking about with the online courses actually at the high school. So that would have to be a bit more creative in terms. Mr. Gillette?
Yes, so since I started it off, maybe I can say the last word. Unless Mr. Hill wants to say one last thing, she usually does. So I had a bad example. I made a bad example when I when I mentioned a position that we're thinking about that it's at the high school. I was really thinking of what Mr. Good you said, it's really, it truly works best at K to six, where you have virtual, where you can do virtual cohorts, even up through sixth grade, you could probably do it. And and to get and but my idea was that to remove the medical and all that legalese from it. Because that, once you get into all of that, then you're giving all kinds of rights out that that and it it becomes very complicated. I understand Mr. Callahan's position, it becomes very complicated with the lawyers and everybody else when you're when you're making these legal accommodations. Forget about the legal accommodations, just create the virtual positions. And we can be assured with Mr. Good's cooperation that the people, you know, appointed to those positions will be the people that need it. If we if we get cooperation from Mr. Good, we can be sure. And that's it. We're not going to confer any, my idea would be to not confer any legal rights through an accommodation to that employee. But just to create a position that we determine that we determine is when the position starts, when it ends. We have we have teachers now that teach for, well, I don't know if we're doing it during COVID, I guess we're not, but I mean, for students that have to be at home. And we have teachers going at home and teaching at home. That's a that's a position. They're still on the guide, they're still regular teachers, but they go to homes, they teach kids. Same type of thing. We create a position virtual, a few at each school, K to six, and have that. That's all that's all I was trying to say. I hope we get somewhere. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah. Mrs. Maron.
I just want to be clear, I'm not saying that I think this is a terrible idea. I think it is a wonderful idea. However, I'm worried about the equity doing the K through six and having it and not having options for high school to do it. And it's very different in the middle school and the high school because of scheduling. I also, I mean, I was all for it way back in the summer when people were talking about having virtual academies and doing it at a countywide and having teachers who were going to be all virtual and taking, you know, students. Unfortunately, we're not there. And that's, I think, what we're trying to do right now in the short amount of time just in Hillsborough. So I get it. And if it's doable, that would be great. But we just, I'm just saying, we need to be careful with the equity amongst all the teachers and being able to offer it to even the high school teachers.
Yeah, I mean.
Not just K through six.
So on the DRC, I actually recommended virtual, virtual pods, and I thought we would have sufficient numbers. And I was told specifically that it was impossible to do at the middle school, at the high school and at Otten Road. So there were K through four virtual cohorts, you know. Unfortunately, there was a messaging issue and there's the issue, the greater issue of equity. And unfortunately, we have to, we have to be concerned about that or else we open ourselves to grievances and legal actions and we're actually told that there would be some. So, you know, this is a difficult situation. I am more than happy to refer it to committee to to have a discussion and see what is possible and what is impossible. Okay, with that, I think, oh, Mr. Oliver? Thank you, Mr. Hill, for being.
One last, one last quick thought, because I didn't want Mr. Gillette to have the last word because I have a dollar bet with Mr. LaCarrie about it. Dr. Sasan, thank you for recognizing Mr. Goodhue. But my one suggestion on this would simply be this, we need to go to the HR committees, Mr. Pulcifer said, we need to come up with a plan. But I would like to take that one step further and I would like to try to form an ad hoc committee, which it appears as Mr. Goodhue has volunteered to be a part of that. But I would like to see an ad hoc committee that we could just have some spirited discussion to see if we can come up with a solution. I mean, in my view, I want the kids to go that want to go to school as many days as they possibly can. I want to get them back in the classroom. I want to get them interacting. I want to do it safe, but I want to accomplish that. And the children that want to be virtual because they're compromised or their parents, and I want to give them the best education possible in that virtual mode. It's very, very difficult to do, but you have some great minds in this room. We can figure it out. We think outside the box, we can figure it out.
I don't.
I'm done.
Thank you. I don't really see a need for an ad hoc committee. I think the HR committee and then working together with with the administration and involving the HGA as appropriate would be the best, the best path forward. This is an HR committee issue. So I don't, you know, ad hoc committees are meant for sort of new issues. So, you know, I think we'll, we'll stick to the committee structure that we have and then adapt it as necessary. And of course, we can invite other interested parties to committee meetings if the administration feels it appropriate. Are people not hearing me? Do I have to unplug and replug? Okay. Okay, so we will go move to the action agenda. Dr. Antunes?
Thank you, Dr. Sasan. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 10.1 to 10.3, motion to approve revised curriculum, motion to approve new curriculum, and motion to approve policies and regulations for the first reading as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Do I have a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.3 as read by the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dr. Harris. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the human resources agenda as follows, 11.1 to 11.15, motion to approve policy and regulation for first reading as listed, motion to approve the retirements and resignations. I'd like to point out Linda Hohn's speech therapist has is retiring after 21 years of service to Hillsborough Township students and Mary La Placa, 18 years of service to the students of Hillsborough. Motion to approve revised co-curricular advisors and revised mentors. Motion to approve revised leaves of absences and revised leave replacement teachers. Motion to approve the revised transportation aides hours and leaves of absence as listed and appointments. Keep in mind, we've already approved Lisa Keel's appointment. And motion to buddies, turnkey trainers, intramural, intramural advisors, sixth period coverage, preapproving extra coverage and approving extra coverage as outlined.
Can I have a motion?
We can't hear you.
So that I was muted then. I would like to separate out the substitutes portion of the appointments. And do I have a motion to approve everything else as read by the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Maron. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So do I have a motion to approve the substitutes portion of the appointments?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulcifer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Any discussion, I had to, I will have to abstain from this because my daughter is being approved as a substitute nurse. Very proud of her for coming back to the school. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Just as an FYI, Mr. Mahmoud, for the board members, you can just hold down the spacebar to temporarily unmute yourself. So you don't have to go looking for the button every time.
Oh, that is awesome.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Gillette?
Well, not on mine.
You have to be, you have to click on the Zoom thing, but yes, then you can temporarily un.
I hear you from right over here. Good. Thank you.
That was just bad advice. I paid, we just paid 1750 for that advice.
All right, Mrs. Haas?
This is what happens when board meetings go to 10:15 before we get to do our work. But yes.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Maron?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
That space button doesn't work, by the way. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pulcifer?
I have to disagree. The space button works just fine. Yes.
Very unique roll call. Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows, 12.1 to 12.4, motion to approve monthly financials, motion to approve monthly bills, the motion to approve the bylaw for first reading, and the motion to approve the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between the Education and Law Enforcement Officials with the revisions as noted.
Do I have a motion to approve items 12.1 through 12.4?
So moved, but I would like to, I'd like to separate 12.3.
Okay. Do I have a second for items 12.1 through 12.4 except for 12.3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Maron. Roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
You? Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes. So do I have a motion to approve item 12.3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maron. Discussion? Mrs. Hill?
Seriously? Greg? All right, so I guess I'll start then. I mean, I don't even know where to begin. So for the public, the reason I'm making such a big deal about this is because bylaw 155 basically is part of how the board conducts its business. And this bylaw that is being introduced tonight for first reading was previously introduced back on June 29th. And I don't think it really improves upon what was presented at the June 29th meeting specifically. If you look at the Governance Committee charge, governance is not governing. There's like a difference. Governance is how the board does its work in terms of policies, bylaws, et cetera. But the way this commit, this bylaw change has happened over time, has basically given the Governance Committee this executive committee status. So I printed out multiple over the years, versions of this policy. So I'm going to go back to the policy as it stood on December 2013. Back then, governance did not have item number four, develop tentative budget and present it to the full board for its for its consideration. That was added during the June 11, 2018 reading. Furthermore, when I, when I discussed this bylaw, I forget if it was a June meeting, the June meeting or prior, when I, when I objected to moving the HR committees, committees' responsibilities of the hiring, retention, evaluation of the superintendent, it got moved to governance. I really don't understand why. So there are a couple of things that I, we discussed in the June meeting, which is basically that items that were in the HR committee responsibilities, such as the evaluation of professionals, would be moved to operations where they currently stand. I guess I can accept that in terms of their non-educational professional services. But I cannot, and I implore my fellow board members to not approve this first reading of the bylaw, because basically it is right before our eyes, creating a committee, an executive committee. This Governance Committee is not a policy committee anymore. It's basically becoming the committee that now rules the entire board. And that's, that's not the way it's supposed to work. And so for the public who might be listening, the reason it's so important is because if we approve this, this basically allows the board to do this. It's basically setting in stone what they're, what they're doing, and I don't agree with it at all. So I hope that this will be returned to governance, that they, that Governance Committee might reflect upon what its primary function should be, which is basically to guide the board on bylaws and policies review, not all the other things that are added to it. Thank you.
Mrs. Stats?
Pardon my ignorance, but I guess I do want clarification of what is meant by a Governance Committee. I mean, I understand, I'm reading here because I printed out a copy of what, everything about Governance Committee. But it does seem to be on the reach of what I thought. I thought the Governance Committee would be just sort of making sure the board is running correctly. But it seems to be overreaching that. So if I could have some clarification of what the intent of what a Governance Committee should be, especially compared to, well, just what a Governance Committee should be.
Mr. Pulcifer?
I don't think there is a definition of what a Governance Committee should be. Our committee structure should be whatever we deem to be the best way to administer our work as a board and how to break it down into committees. I guess if people find that word objectionable, you could change the name of the committee. But to me, I'm less concerned with the name of the committee than with what work is to assign to that committee. And when I look at this bylaw, what I see assigned there is things that don't belong in any other of the more specific committees. assign to that committee. Um, and when I look at this by law, what I see assigned there is things that don't belong in any other of the more specific committees. Uh, for example, hiring superintendent. Um, to me, that's not an HR thing, uh, because that's as much about education as it is HR or about operations, about, you know, in terms of hiring superintendent. So to me, there's a need for a committee, uh, so that we can have a committee meeting as opposed to a board meeting, but a committee that can look after things, go beyond a single, uh, one of the other standing committees that are much more focused. At the end of the day, we can have this committee do whatever we want. We can call it whatever we want. If the board chooses to make a committee to do a certain set of tasks, then we can make that our by law and that's what they do. So, um, i- if it's a problem with the word, we can change it. Um, but really, as far as I understand, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lepira, but we can make a committee and we can assign whatever task we want to that committee and give what name we want to that committee. And if the board approves it by approving this by law, that's what that committee is.
Right. In, in the end, um, the committee structure is, as you make it, there aren't any specific committees that a, a board of education must have, or you don't have to have committees at all, frankly, although most boards do. Um, they would say that's far more common than, than boards that constantly act as a committee of the whole. It's probably a lot easier with a smaller board, smaller district, but that's not realistic here. Um, but in general, you're correct. Whatever the committees that you as a board, um, vote to have, those are the committee structures that will be in place. Um, and, um, you know, in other boards, sometimes those committees change and sometimes they remain the same for 20, 30 years in a row. But, um, it depends upon what the board wants to do there.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes, so just, I, I probably said this before, maybe, but it might have been a year ago, so I'll say it again. So, uh, governance committee was, um, not one of the traditional eight committees that were one of the committees when I started on the board a million years ago. Um, but, uh, I think it was around 2012, uh, we had, um, the, um, auditors, they weren't really auditors, I don't know what they were, from, um, NJ CUSAC that came into the district and they looked at four areas of our district to see how we're performing. And it, they looked at HR, um, operations, education, and what they called governance. And so we said, oh, well, that should be the four committees. That's kind of how it crept in. But to Mrs. Stats' point, it was more of governments, governance, not, but not just for the board governance. It was the NJ CUSAC committee looked at district governance. So if the district was, um, uh, fulfilling in, in general, all the things that needs to fulfill. And also board governance too, how we work with our own bylaws and stuff. And to Mr. Trujillo's point, it has grown. I think governance committee has, has grown from its original aspects. It has grown to accomplish what was shed, because we had eight committees and everybody had something. When you had narrowly had three plus like a casual sort of, and the big shift came when they said, well, they're going to do the budget also. That, I think that was a big, that was a big, uh, shift in that part. So that's kind of how we got here. Um, I, I wanted to separate it because I just thought there was some more work to be done. I actually don't like, you know, the, the whole operations committee part of it. I don't, I don't, I don't remember having looked at, you know, looked at this to try to revise it. I've always been on operations committee or finance in the old days, and I haven't never, ever looked at this in committee to re, to revise it. I think, you know, maybe each committee should look at their aspect of it and make suggestions for it. Because I don't, you know, I, I would take a lot of this out of operations committee. A lot, a lot of just, we have specific things in here that were specific to the year that the policy was written. This, um, you know, uh, green initiatives. Well, that was in there because of that one year when we were doing some green initiative thing. But it, it, it's too specific to even have in here, I think. So that's why I wanted to separate it. I'm, I'm going to go no on it. And, um, but we'll, you know, we'll get it done. I'm optimistic. Thank you.
So let me just say that, um, last year, when budget was, uh, was taken out of operations and moved to governance, that was your suggestion, I believe, Mr. Gillette. Um, so, you know, so that you mentioned that was sort of, um, odd. I mean, I thi, I think it's important to note that no committee acts on its own. We act as, uh, as a whole board, as a board of the whole. So regardless of who is on a committee, um, or, or what committee, um, is tasked with, just like we saw today with the ionization issue, um, we act as, as a board of the whole. So, um, you know, I think that is really important to note. With regard to the things, you know, that, that the governance committee, um, took out of HR, uh, the superintendent's piece, I mean, I can't envision a time where we would not have a, a committee to appoint a superintendent or two, I should say, go through the process of, of, um, reviewing, doing the initial reviews of the superintendent in a superintendent search. But again, the whole board must act. Um, I, I would, when we went through this just last year, we discussed, you know, having a, a separate committee for, um, for the superintendent search. Um, with regard to the, what Mr. Um, Pulsifer said, the governance committee has representation from all of the other committees. And so, um, it seems appropriate for things like the budget, um, to be done there because they could represent the will of their committees. Uh, likewise, with the evaluation of the superintendent, which is being placed there. Um, one thing that was moved into HR, um, was the issue of, um, making, reviewing recommendations made by the administration on district employee health plans, because that was in operations because that's something that Mr. Mahmoud deals with because we have a benefits advisor and it's a contractual thing. Um, but it is a, a real HR issue. So the, the whole intent of this was to right-size, um, this with what makes sense. Uh, where governance has representation from all the committees, um, HR really does have to look at the whole of, of human resources, not just, you know, some of, part of the human resources agenda. Um, with, except with our executive, which, um, which is more appropriately dealt with, uh, you know, by a committee of representatives from, from multiple things. Um, likewise, we moved to the criteria for coordinating a selection process for non-educational professional services from HR into operations because they really deal with our subcontractors. So, um, I, you know, obviously, uh, there could be more improvements, but I don't see a need to delay this any further. If there is a positive vote, we can continue the discussion. If we want to call out, you know, different sections within each committee. Um, but, uh, you know, I'm at, I'm at the board's, um, uh, position here. Go ahead, Mrs. Trujillo.
So I was just looking at the CUSAC manual from August 2018. There might be more recent, but this is what I have on my computer. And to Mr. Gillette's point, there, I guess he said it in 2012, so this is 2018. There's actually five areas of review. And they are instruction and programs. That's like our education, fiscal, which we do not have, governance, operations, and personnel. And so to your point, Dr. Sasan, regarding governance being the, the, um, superintendent's, let me just scroll down to it, the superintendent's evaluating the superintendent, that's actually under governance, so I will give you that. But, but to your point about the superintendent search, that there was to be a committee if we were going out to search, I think actually that's, that's another thing that I object to. Because when I spoke with the lawyer from school boards, they said that anybody who would like to be involved with the superintendent search could be on that committee, not just the people who were selected by the board president.
So, so I, what I said was this, an initial search committee. Um, it is important for all board members to participate in the selection of a superintendent. But what I'm talking about here is the initial search. So when we were talking with Ms. Thornton of, um, school boards, what she said is that you should have a number of people who would be able to attend all of the different meetings, which of course, you know, from nine people, it's very hard to get, um, to get four who can do that and who would commit to doing that, um, review the applications that were called down by, you know, our contractor, if we, if we went out to a search, um, firm, and then, um, recommend a certain number to the full board. And then at that point, the full board would be, uh, would participate in the process. So this would just be a search committee, I mean, a, a subcommittee who would get to that point of bringing the last, you know, say, less than 10, um, potential applicants for actual interview for, by the full board.
So I, I objected to that, that, that can be another discussion, further discussion. I objected to that because I think that anybody who wanted to be on that initial search committee should be allowed to be on it if they could commit to all of the meetings for the reason that when you see a, a, what's the word? Like a selected group of resumes versus the entire candidate pool, I think that, that the, that there's subject, there's, there's value to being part of that process. So I will leave that alone for now, since that's not currently being, it's not currently on the table. The governance committee, as Mr. Pulsifer said, is being a catch-all committee. I disagree with that interpretation. And I would propose that we, I think it was Mr. Gillette who said have all, have this by law go back to each committee to review and then also look at the CUSAC manual for the five areas of, what do they call it? Five areas of CUSAC overview. And see that maybe we should have a fiscal committee, because I think that's really important. I mean, tonight was the first time that the-
I can't hear you.
-public input on the, oh, can you not hear me?
No, I can't hear, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That the fiscal, um, the budget input was the first time on the committee, um, agenda tonight. And so that we would basically have five committees. And maybe the fiscal committee would be a budget committee during October through April timeframe.
Let's vote.
Okay. Okay. We'll vote on, we'll vote on this, uh, the way that it is. We have a, a, a first and a second, uh, a motion and a second, and then we'll see where we end up. Um, Ms. Stats?
Um, I just want to point out, uh, there, there are a few times where, uh, communications is mentioned. Um, there is one time where it does mention, um, unless there's an ad hoc committee formed, which there is. Um, but there are other times where, um, like it says, uh, develop goals and objectives for improvement communication, promoting goodwill between the district and the public, but with no caveat about an ad hoc committee. Um, uh, what concerns me is we do have a, a communications committee, but we've only met twice this year, March, and, uh, just, just recently in this month of October. So I'm concerned that we, uh, that, uh, whether or not the, uh, governance committee perhaps has been doing some of the work that the, uh, communications committee has been doing. And I would like the language in there to reflect that, uh, anything that alludes to communications, uh, by the governance committee should only be done, uh, when, uh, if there is no ad hoc committee for communications.
Um, well, first of all, I don't think that we have been doing the work of the communications committee, but, um, and, you know, the president can appoint ad hoc committees as needed. So the standing committees, um, I'm, I'm not, not even looking where, seeing where there is an issue in governance with regard to communications. Can you be more specific, Ms. Stats?
Um, in number three, I think it's, let's see, the second bullet and the third bullet?
It actually says, when an ad hoc committee is not created.
Yes, I believe that's in the first. I'm sorry, I have a weird printout of this, so it's not, uh, you know, organized properly. So with that ad hoc committee mentioned there, um, that does apply to all the bullets there?
No, it, I, under item three, yes, it applies to all of those bullets.
Bullets that are under three.
Yeah, under three. So evaluate the ways in which the school district disseminates information and receives public input when an ad hoc committee is not created. And then the two bullets under that develop goals and objectives for improving communications and work with citizen task forces, those would both fall under the ad hoc committee.
And in the first paragraph, hopefully, um, it mentions, um, and communications with the public, if there could be the, uh, uh, mention of, um, when an ad hoc committee is not created at that point too.
Um, I don't see a problem with that. I can add that into this version. Though I think it makes it clear below, I, if that would make it more comfortable. I think that makes more sense. Um, okay. And, um, I think Dr. Harris would like to vote, I would like to, um, say something?
Yes, as the chairperson for the communications committee and serving on the governance committee, I can say that there, there has been no overlap of work by the governance committee doing communication committee work. The reason the communication committee has not met more often is we are in a pandemic and we had other things to focus on as far as what our boundaries go as a committee. So we didn't meet because the administration was busy trying to get the road to recovery or road, whatever the thing is called.
Road back plan.
Thank you. Road back plan in operating order. And we're still having discussions about that. So the communications committee had to take a backseat because the precedent was to get the school district back on its feet.
Yeah, I think I, I would agree with you, Dr. Harris, that there were a lot of pressing things. Our administrator's time, um, was, was being taken up by other things. And obviously the, the work of the committees in operations to deal with the facilities issues and HR to deal with all of the issues there. And then obviously in education with curriculum instruction took precedence over, over communications, which we could always use more, more work on. Um, and we, you know, especially when we don't have a staff member, um, who is exclusively working on communications and not doing a million other things at the same time. Um, okay, so Mrs. Stats?
I just want to clarify or say again that, um, we did not meet in January, February, and there was no, uh, concern about a pandemic at that time. Um, and I understand that, uh, yes, there are pressing issues, but communication seems to have been an issue, um, during the pandemic as well. I guess there's a balance as to, um, I wouldn't say we'd have to meet every month, but, um, but going back, we definitely could have met during January and February.
Yeah, it, it was just hard to, January, you know, with reorg and in January, we didn't even have, uh, committee meetings scheduled for January, but, and we, we did get the earliest date that we possibly could have. Um, though I, I do agree that more communications meetings, uh, would, would be, uh, a, a very good thing. Uh, I would like to see them happen at least once a quarter, if not every other month. Um, but, you know, something to strive for. Okay, so with that, I think we'll call the vote. Mr. Mahmoud?
No.
She's trying.
I see where she is.
I don't know if she heard you.
I'm trying to unmute her.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. She abstained.
She abstained.
Does not pass.
Does not pass. Correct. You need, you need a simple majority of those present in voting. So since it's four, four, you still need five.
Motion's out.
Okay. Right, right.
Okay. Okay, so before we move to adjourn the meeting, I did want to talk about the procedures for the next meeting and make sure that we are good with, with either continuing the way that we did tonight, in which case we don't have to take any action. But if we want to change the resolution in any way and notice those meetings in any different way than we did this time, then we, we need to discuss that and, and be ready prior to the next meeting. So, Mrs. Traheya?
I would like to add a second public comment period.
And I heard that from Mrs. Stats as well?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the question, the question is, do we have a second public comment? So that, so what that would entail, let me be very clear, is that the first public comment would only be for items on the agenda, which is what our bylaw says, which means that in the case of people who want to make a comment for items not on the agenda, they would have to wait until potentially 10:45 to do so. Is that what we want? Mrs. Traheya?
So since we're amending the bylaws for these special situations, I would like to have two public comment periods, both of which allow the public to comment on the action agenda or anything else. And there's a time limit. There's a time limit. We have a time limit.
So you want it to be a half hour in the beginning and a half hour at the end? I mean, you have to, you have to remember that by 11 o'clock, we are supposed to be done and/or we need a motion to actually extend the meeting. So, you know, we had a lot of discussion. I thought it was very fruitful discussion and I, and I appreciated the people who took the time to take a public comment. But I, I do caution the board against making it sort of a free for all. Mrs. Stats?
I'm, I'm wondering if we should wait the time more for the first public comment for the exact same reasons you just said. At, you know, having the second public comment time be around now in some, a lot of cases, could be prohibitive for people to stay here. So, you know, if we, if we limit it to a half hour and some people wanted to say something, they might be less likely to stay. So I don't know if we could think about waiting at maybe 45 minutes for the first public comment, if, if we do need to limit it. I mean, it might end up speaking for itself. It might end up being less than a half hour first time anyway. But if we, to cap it, I'm wondering if maybe extend it to 45 minutes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
I, I'm trying to think, just through the comments we had tonight, and they were very important and insightful comments from the people here in public. I can't associate any one of the things that they discussed with something we actually voted on tonight. So I think quite often there's as much discussion about things that are happening in the district or situations that people have become aware of or reacting to, that because of the timeliness has had no opportunity to even be something on the action agenda. So there'll be plenty of meetings where I think we'll end up with more comment not about the action agenda than about the action agenda. But having said that, I think it's also important, the, the reason we're here, first and foremost, that is, we have a responsibility and a legal obligation to conduct our business in public. So we must make sure that we have time at a reasonable point in the evening to do our action. We should not be doing our action at 11:30 at night when people at home may have gotten too tired and not stayed with it. We need to be taking our action at a reasonable time. And that's why I think we need to protect comments about the action agenda so that we can then execute on the action agenda. And then we can allow some amount of time for comments after that for whatever other issues are, are going on in the district at the time. But legally, we must take our action in, in front of the public and in my view, at a reasonable time for the public. And if we allow for comment that drags us until 11 o'clock to finally hit our action agenda, then we're not taking action at a fair time for the public to watch us, which is why we're here for a public meeting.
Okay, so, can I break this up into little bits and, and see where we have agreement or more than five people interested in vote in changing the resolution? Okay, so the first bit is, do we want two public comment periods? And then if we want two public comment periods, do we leave it as action agenda, any business separated into those two public comment periods, or a free for all in either case? So I don't know how to do this. Mr. Lapierre, maybe you're, you could be of help here.
Well, I, so, so ultimately what we're looking to do is finalize the proposal. So I think you could just do a show of hands at this point, saying how many people are in favor of having two, you don't have to do a roll call, in other words. So how many people are in favor of having two public comment sessions? And then if, if that doesn't get five, then you don't have to do anything else. If that doesn't get five, now you've got to decide how are we going to do that?
So, but my question, but really, I might vote differently, or somebody might vote differently, based on, based on whether or not, I mean, I will vote no if it's a free for all both times and if there are no, you know, no limits. But I would, but I might change my mind if it was, so I guess, I guess.
Maybe, maybe do both of those. Maybe say, well, I guess we're considering whether, I guess if you don't want to have two public comment sessions, you would vote no to either proposal. So proposal one could be public comment where both are a free for all, using those, that terminology.
Yes.
You vote on that. And then the next one would be public comment where the first one is action items only, the second one is agenda items only, and vote on that. And then obviously if someone doesn't want to have two public comment sessions, period, they would vote no on both of those. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay, so it's multiple choice. Multiple choice would be.
Okay, you could do it that way, too.
Multiple choice, no grading on a curve. All right, so A is leave it as is, one public comment. B is two public comments, agenda only, and then any, any comment. The third is two public comments, people can talk about anything either time. Okay, so A, B, or C?
You can go around A, B, and C, sure.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? I'm, I'm confused now.
So A is leave it as is, one public.
Now you know how teachers, what teachers have to do.
So one public comment, they could speak about any topic.
Exactly, as we are doing it now, so.
I got my multiple choice answer.
Okay, status quo is A. B is we resort, we revert to the way that we used to do it, which is two public comments, but agenda only, and then any public comment at the end about any topic. C would be any topic either time with two public comment periods. I have to tell you, I'm, I'm really scared about B, just monitoring that in terms of, like, I'd have to ask them what agenda item they're, they're discussing. And that becomes very cumbersome, especially if you have people on the phone at home everywhere else. But, but we will go with A, B, or C, starting with Mr. Gillette?
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go A. I think it worked okay. 60 minutes, A, 60 minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Haas?
I'm good with A. I could also deal with B if the, if there was a strict adherence to the comments on the agenda at the beginning and only the agenda so that we could do our business before 11 o'clock, when we have to vote on items and then have the other discussions, all other areas afterwards. And, you know, just for the sake of havoc, I kind of like the idea of a free for all also, so.
Jeez.
I'm gonna vote.
That was D.
Use one, please.
Was D all of the above?
Yeah, that was all of the above.
All of the above. Otherwise, I'm going for the status quo.
Okay. All right. Who is next in the alphabet, Mr. Mahmood? This is Harris, Dr. Harris.
I like simplicity, so I'll go with Plan A.
Thank you. Okay?
Oh, God, here we go. See, I, I like A for the 60 minutes, but I also like C, just to break it up a little bit. But I do like the free for all because I agree with you that the B, with having the, the two separate and making people wait and having to stop people and start people and then, so I guess I'll just stick with A.
Mr. Pulsifer? Oh, Oliver.
Mr. Oliver. O's before P.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm staying with option A.
Okay. I think we're at five then. Mr. Pulsifer?
I was gonna say B. My problem with the free for all is that we, the whole point of trying to get the action agenda earlier is totally killed by option C if it's a free for all and option A really if it's a free for all. I still think we have an obligation to handle our, the business of the meeting at a, at a reasonable time for all people watching. And for many people, whether they go to bed early because they're tired or because they go to bed early because they have to go to work early the next morning, we need to be taking care of our actual business at a reasonable time.
Okay. Mrs. Stats?
Okay, I, I want C. What I don't understand is with A, wouldn't the 60 minutes be all at the, the one and only public comment? So that would lengthen, and that would be before all the items on the agenda. So the concerns that people have about the items being addressed by the board seems to be contradictory. But anyway, I vote for C.
So I vote for C. What was C again? It was the one where it was, you could talk about
anything you wanted to? Okay, so I would do that. And I was just looking back at my notes tonight, so I don't, I didn't write timestamps down, but when we started taking the action agenda, when we started talking about that, the public comments had happened already and then we, we as the board started talking. And that's what took at the time. The, there were six comments tonight. That took, I mean, six times three, 18 minutes?
So what you're saying is I should limit board comment?
Well, I'm saying, if, if, what Chris is saying is that we should do our action agenda at a reasonable time, then we should do the committee reports at the end, maybe. I mean, I don't, I don't understand because.
The committee, I think the committee reports.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So A, committee port, committee reports should be explaining some of the items that are actually on the action agenda. We had two human resources committee meeting items that were on the agenda, so that clearly needs to go before. I would not make any judgment based on tonight's meeting. Yes, there are only six comments tonight. What happens in two or three more meetings when people are comfortable with the Zoom interface or calling in and we have 50 people who want to comment? I think using tonight's first ever meeting of trying to do this is not the statistics we should use to judge timing. You know, I, I think we have to consider what would happen when we have 20 or 30 people who want to comment in the free for all. Now we're talking an hour and a half. I, I think the resolution passed, Mr. Mahmood, right? Did you have five votes for A? So I think we're talking a mute point. I, I think 60 minutes? That's not, yeah, wait. I think it passed. We vote, wait, there was no motion. There was a question about which thing would you, wait, please, let's make this clear, because I didn't know I was voting. I thought I was expressing an opinion about which one I favored. I didn't think that was a formal vote.
It's just a straw poll to determine how we're gonna go.
There was not a vote.
Right, so, so if, if you have five people who are right now, and Dr. Swazan didn't express her opinion, but if you have five people who want to keep the status quo, I mean, I think that that probably means that if you do have a motion and second it for another thing, it's probably going to be defeated. But it's up, you know, people can still make the motion if they want. But I'm, I'm thinking that as, insofar as a straw poll is concerned, it doesn't seem like there's an impetus to change it by a majority of those who will be voting on it, if that makes any sense.
To be clear, we're saying the majority was for A, which had a 60-minute limit?
Yes.
And an all, and all for, all, whatever I called them, all, all topics, 60-minute limit. I mean, you know.
I'm, I'm more concerned about the 60 minutes than the all topics, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so.
I'm so confused. Who voted? So Greg said yes to A. Judy said.
Judy said there's benefits to all of them, but A is fine with her. B is fine with her, C is fine with her.
Don said A. Lisa, you said?
Said A. Ann said, Ann said A.
Oh, so that was five?
Yeah.
Wow, I, I, you know what? This is, this is, this is why I object so much to this and, and I recognize it's like three minutes, but it's, it's like we don't, we don't let the public speak. And so, and we also don't follow our own rules. So Mr. Goodhue was in the audience with his hand up and it was great that you acknowledged him, but by our board policy, we should have taken a motion to open up for public comments again, recognize him and let him speak. And so this, by this, with this straw poll saying, well, we just have one public comment period, well, people may have heard all of this and said that they wanted to say something to, to maybe try and sway our opinion. And now they don't have that opportunity and they only have the opportunity to write to us. I'm just so frustrated.
They do have the opportunity to write to us. I mean, we're not taking any more action anymore tonight. So, you know, and they can call in the next time and sway our opinion or write in again and I will read it. I mean, I, I have no objection to C either. B, I, I, B is my preference, but even when we had that, it was difficult to enforce and it was subjective, you know. For, for people who didn't have the agenda or just want to call in about a public comment, they're all going to raise their hand in Zoom. I think B is the worst option here. I would be fine with C, but then we need to limit, we, we need to limit it to, to 30, anticipating that we might have 30 later, which I think cuts down on public comment. I mean, you know, I, it is a, it's a, I don't know. I can think of a lot of words, but right now, none of them seem to be.
So here's the thing. Mr. Lapierre had said before that we could set a rule and that for most days, we would not have extra public comment. How many times have we been pre-COVID where there has been no second public comment period? But there was an opportunity for people to have it. Now we're not even allowing people, I mean, because you basically said I can't make a motion to allow the two remaining people who are in the room to speak, to, to, to say something if they, if they so chose.
Why did I, I didn't say that?
No, what I'm saying is that, well, by the resolution this morning, I'm sorry, not this morning, the resolution at the beginning of the meeting, we can't change like how we're going to do business tonight. But what Mr. Lapierre had said prior is that even if you set a 30-minute public comment period, you can always extend that public comment period if there's a line out the door by majority vote of the board. I'm suggesting that we have that second public comment period for our hybrid meetings so that if somebody is up and they want to make a comment and say like, you know, X, Y, and Z, or whatever, they have that opportunity. Probably they won't, because who would be up at this hour? But there's actually, there's actually, hang on, there's six people in the, two of which, well, one of it's the kiosk, so five people, well, actually six. But anyway, so you get my point, right?
Also, there's been quite a few meetings where we aren't this late. So I don't know, again, we can't use this as an example.
It is 11 o'clock?
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, like, like you said, I'm, I'm fine with C as well.
So, I mean, what, what I would suggest is that we, we, that we go with C, but we limit the time for both parts because I, I do value, I mean, I sat here and I had no idea what to do with Mr. He, with Mr. Goodhue's hand going further up in the air. And I just took the initiative and said, screw it, I'm gonna let him talk. But that, you know, that might not be, it's not fair to people at home who don't have an opportunity to, to lift their hand. So I, I would, I think my preference is. So I would, I think my preference is C, but we, we limit the beginning to 30 minutes unless we, we take a motion to extend that. And then in the end, we try to, we try to keep it, we try to limit it at 60 minutes total, but just having some minutes at the back of the meeting for ending comments. Is that okay with everybody? Yeah, Judy?
You're muted.
I don't think she, oh.
We actually have a policy on the conduct of board meetings, and amusingly, it states that after the, you know, the call to order, the correspondence, the approval of minutes, pledge of allegiance, whatever, recognition, awards, we start with a new business from the public and the board for a maximum of 30 minutes. And then the superintendent gives her report, and then we accept public comments or questions from the board and public regarding the superintendent report. Then there's an action agenda with comments from the public on the evening's action agenda. And then there's old business with comments and questions from the board and public on old business. And that is what our policy, our bylaws now state.
Okay, so it's after 11 o'clock, we need a motion to go on further, or we can just say C is the way we're gonna do it. And because we never, the whole time I was on the board, we've never operated that way. So.
We should change the policy, though.
Yeah, well, okay, we'll take that up in governance, which.
Yep. Which is where it began.
So I guess the question is, do you have a motion and a second for C?
That's what I'm, that's what I was getting to do. So can I just move or do I have to take a motion from somebody?
No, you can, you can move C.
So I move that we, that we adjust the resolution to allow for any public comment, public comment on any topic twice during the meeting, once before the action agenda and one after the action agenda, for no more than 60 minutes split into, you know, 30 and 30, at least to start. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, because, because, wait, wait a second, hold on.
Go ahead, Greg.
Clarification, one thing, Mr. Goodhue's second comment, if you will, the second time when you were saying, that was before the action agenda, that wasn't after, so it wouldn't have applied. That was still before the action agenda. So we're gonna give people a chance to comment and then we talk a little bit, then comment more. Are you gonna, are you gonna cut it off? So you still have that dilemma. Second, real quick, we passed a resolution tonight about red ribbon week, very important. You know, we're all, we're all concerned with student substance abuse, but we've also had testimony here before the board in previous years that one of the biggest influences on students trying drugs is the attitude of their parents, authority figures, and other adults about drugs. So what we really should have passed tonight was a resolution opposing the legalization of marijuana, because nothing says, nothing confirms your attitude about drugs than whether or not you, that for the legalization of marijuana. So that should have passed tonight if we wanted to do something. That's all, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Otherwise, I need a motion to continue.
Stuck it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't see any opposition. Thank you. Next meeting is October, November 9.